Yes, we're back in.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, when you want to call us back into public session and we'll have our announcements about the executive session?
So, we are back in public session. We went into executive session at 6:30 this evening. We did rise for the Pledge of Allegiance at that time for the record. And, Mr. Solicitor, if you could walk us through the rest of it.
Sure. I just want to announce for the record that action was taken in executive session. And I think at this time, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session. The results of the motion will be revealed, but not until appropriate. So, second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as suggested by the solicitors. Are any discussions hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the first item of business is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is A1. This is the submission in minutes for the town council meeting of June 22nd.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Before we move forward, I do ask this council if we could have a couple of motions to move a few things. First, I'd like to move with this council's approval, I1 forward. I1.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Motion made by Aaron, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Administrator, did you want to start or would you like me to start? So, we get the opportunity every once in a while, and recently, we've had this opportunity a few times, to recognize an employee or a volunteer of the town. In this particular instance, an employee of the town who has been or was an employer of the town for 43 years. It's such a horrible place to work that he just wouldn't leave for 43 years. Jim Sylvester III was valued and is still a valued employer of the town of Bristol. He began his career with the Department of Public Works on August 14th, 1979. These 43 years ago service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community. And James Jimmy Sylvester III has worked consistently for the betterment of the Bristol Public Works System, which has contributed to the health, safety, and comfort of this community. This is signed by myself, Mary Perella, Antonio Texera, Timothy Sweeney, Aaron Lay, Melissa Cudero, and Steve Contente. If we could all rise with a big round of applause. Jimmy loves to be in the spotlight. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you. So, it's a great privilege and an honor for me to present the Town Coin to Jim. This is always a special event. And recently, I gave the Town Coin. Our policy has been to give the Town Coin to lifelong town employees, visiting ship captains, or visiting dignitaries. So, the last one that went out, and they're all signed up by the treasurer, they're kept in the town safe. The last one was to the captain of the USS Milwaukee when he was here. And when I said to him that this is also given out to lifelong town employees, I think he was impressed that he was getting one. So, Jim, on behalf of the Town of Bristol, we can't thank you enough for all the long hours and the dedication you've had for 43 years. When I started in high school on the fire department, I used to call you were the deputy chief at that time on the fire department. So, I called you chief for many years until I became town administrator. And I said, I'm not going to call him chief anymore. But if you want me to, I will, Jim. So, we have this Town Coin, and I like to say it is it's special because there aren't many of them, the actual gold Town Coins that are given out. And I thought of ordering you a pewter one, but then I realized you actually didn't work the Blizzard of 78. You started in 1979. Yeah, so if you had worked the 78, maybe you would have got a pewter one. But anyway, this is the Town Coin, and you are certainly more than deserving of it. And you're going to be a loss for the town and the department, but you left the department well. And we know that you're available for us. You've offered your services and all your institutional knowledge. So, behalf of everybody, thank you. And I know the people that you work with, they're all here. So, thank you. And Jim, best wish. We hope you have a long retirement.
Before we move forward, I'd also ask that this council add an agenda item. I'd like to, per the administrator's request and suggestion, add an agenda item to recognize our new Parks and Recreation Director, Warren Rentshausen. Could I have a motion of that effect?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Administrator?
It's a good opportunity to publicly introduce Warren Rentshausen, lifelong resident of Bristol. He was the Assistant Recreation Director in the 1990s. He went off. He led two other, successfully led two other recreation departments in Southeastern New England. And we're lucky enough to have him back here. He's a certified professional recreation director, nationally recognized. And he started, I think, two or three days before the summer camp opened up, and we haven't had a hitch there. Things are running smoothly. And I just would like to publicly welcome Warren back to Bristol and best wishes to you.
Counsel?
I just would like to say it's a pleasure to have you back. I know we had quite a few working days when I was in the rec board. And certainly, it's nice to have you back because I know you have the best interest of the town. So, best of luck.
I think we all wish you the best and very happy that you're here. Look very closely on the way you are. Got to be this. And thank you. May we look forward to your attention.
Welcome to the team, Warren. Congratulations. Happy to have you on board.
Welcome. Excellent. Yes, I'm going to still continue to do this. I apologize. So, last is, I would like to make a proposal. Actually, Mary, this was your suggestion, to move the public hearing, which I know most of you are here for. It's going to sound bad. It's actually not. To the end of the meeting, there's not much on our agenda, and I'd like to go through those things quickly. Again, by Mary's suggestion, I completely agree. There's some basic license, important things, but we should go through them very quickly. So, that way, we can get right to the business at hand, which I think a lot of you are here for. So, could I have a motion to move the public?
Just because some of them are very quick. Somebody's here, they may be here for hours, it'd be a good thing to have two minutes.
Second.
So, motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to move B1 to the end of the meeting prior, actually, not the end, right before executive session. Because you have executive session. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'm done, Madam Clerk. I square.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item of business is C1. This is ordinance 2022-7. This is for Chapter 16 of the Motor Vehicles and Traffic. And this is force. No overnight parking prohibited at the base of San Francisco Street at the open space walking trail. It's the second reading.
Motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D1. This is Matthew Maderos from Basilin Bunny, 500 Wood Street, Unit 214. This is a request for a vitaling license.
Is Matthew here?
He did do his commercial.
Matthew thought he was going to be here a little while, I think. So, come on up, Matthew. It's a podium right here, if you don't mind.
Forgive me, it's my first time in this.
Not at all. So, as Matthew comes up, what's this council's pleasure, and we can have discussion at the end?
Based on the positive recommendations, I move that we approve it. Second.
There's a motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Discussion? Matthew, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Matthew Maderos. The address of the business would be 500 Wood Street, Unit 214, here in Bristol.
Now, this is your 32nd commercial, and you've got a room full of people to share. So, please tell us about what you want to do.
Yeah, we are 100% plant-based comfort food. We started out of Hope, Maine, in Warren, Rhode Island, a couple of years ago, just before the pandemic with a food truck. And we are now scaling our business and expanding with a brick and mortar right here in Bristol as part of Unity Park. We specialize in burgers, fries, crispy chicken. It's going to be a fast casual place to come and enjoy some plant-based food with your friends and family right here in Bristol. So.
Sounds excellent. Counsel?
Congratulations. I know you have a lot of choices and towns you could go to, and you picked Bristol. I'm believing you picked a good town.
We're excited to be here.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you so much.
And I'm so happy to see all the graduates coming out of Hope, Maine, moving up to Unity Park. So, can't wait to try your place. I've had your stuff in the past. I can't wait to see your in-person restaurant.
Perfect. Yeah, and we look forward to having you there. It's going to be a great little community. So.
Excellent.
You're definitely joining a good group over there, squaring on the taking. And certainly, you'll enjoy it. Best of luck.
We're excited. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much, Sean.
You too.
See, the problem with clapping is that now you have to clap for everything. Or people are going to feel bad. So, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item of business is D2. This is Chelsea Barton Carnes for Thistle and Posey Flowers, 204 Gooding Avenue. This is a request for holiday sales license.
Based on the positive recommendations, make motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is E1. This is Armin Pereira from the VFW, Post 237. This is a dancing and entertainment license renewal. However, this is a late renewal petition with modification to the entertainment area to include the outdoor.
Counsel? Is Armored here? Okay, that's okay. What's this council's pleasure?
Based on the positive recommendations, make motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F2. This is Sedalia Harper of 18 Ryan Avenue. This is a request for A. I'm sorry. She's from 19 Ryan Avenue. She's requesting the 18 Ryan Avenue removal of this accessible parking space. This is first reading. I skipped over F1.
I was just going to say it's 82 High Street.
I skipped a page. I'm sorry.
No problem.
Skipping back to F1. We have F1, Joanne Maderos, 82 High Street. This is the removal of the accessible parking space. Second reading.
Motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
I think Tony got it. You're in there.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary, that this constitutes second reading. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Yes, I will add to that and say thank you again is, we are happy to consider accessible parking spaces. We're also happy when they're no longer needed to have them removed and have them a normal space again. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F2. This is Sedalia Harper of 19 Ryan Avenue requesting the 18 Ryan Avenue removal of accessible parking space. First reading.
Make a motion. Do we approve it?
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. Does this constitute first readings or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F3. This is Sedalia Harper of 19 Ryan Avenue. This is a request for no parking. First reading.
Motion to approve first reading. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. This constitutes first readings or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Based on the recommendation of the chief, I move that we approve it.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is I2. This is the resolution in regards to the assessment and valuation and levy of the taxes, sewer service fees, and sewer assessments.
Motion to accept or adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I3. This is Paula J. Ferreira, 1014 Hope Street, Apartment X3. This is a request that the grant funds to be reallocated to the Benjamin Church Resident Association from the Benjamin Church Tenants Association.
I move the grant request. It sounds like they dissolved the organization and they sort of formed a new organization. So, it's basically a 10A change, I think.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to approve. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can go back to I1 with the citation for Jimmy Sylvester, I just need a motion to receive and file for that. I didn't have that on the record.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to receive and file. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda will be K1. This is Ellen Clever, the Barrington Director of the Bristol County Water Authority. This is the monthly report ending in June 24, 2022.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to receive and file. Any discussion?
Just briefly, it's grand press of many of the projects have been undertaken by the water authority, and certainly, it's in the best interest of our community. So, it's nice to see that.
Well put. On the top of Tupelo on Hope Street, you can see all the work that's being done there for the additional pump station, and then all the work. Well, there's work everywhere, but particularly on Medicom Ave over the course of a few months in that same area on the Medicom side. So, all of these things should help improve water pressure around the area, particularly up in that area where it's been a little lacking for a long time. So, great points.
And also the care and design of the pump station is going to be actually look like a house. I mean, it blends right in with our surroundings. So, it's not like an ugly pump. So, my hat's off to them. I'm glad they're making it fit.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is L1. This is town solicitor with the draft ordinance for the council consideration for Section 2510, the use of the sidewalks for dining and other purposes for business establishments licenses in Section 2515 for the sidewalk alcohol service licensing.
Counsel? Tony, can you start?
Well, I have a comment, not a motion at this point.
Go ahead.
I know it sounds like pretty silly, but, you know, I think about it. What's the purpose of us building sidewalks? I know. I'm not looking for a response from anybody, but I'll answer that. I think, okay, it's for pedestrian traffic. With that being said, okay, we asking to reduce the size of this. Well, last night, unfortunately, in order to get around with my wife, it's a wheelchair nowadays. And with that being said, we went to two different locations. And I says, okay, four feet. Hmm. Well, one particular location, I got to pull over because somebody's coming the opposite direction. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. It took me quite a few excuse me's to get through one location. I went to another location, and the, I've attended the the waiter, you know, the waiter was in a hurry to cross over to go to the dining area across the sidewalk. Almost knocked my wife over. Okay, these are the things that we deal with, folks, you know, and here we are talking four feet, right? Let's see, four feet. Well, I don't know. Put a wheelchair there, have a person come in the opposite direction. Let's see if we can squeeze in there. That's my point.
So, we, this council, in our last meeting, had tasked the solicitor to review our sidewalk ordinance to see if we could make it more, I would say, simpler, I guess. The way it reads currently, and why it's in front of us this evening, is it says, for example, for sidewalks between nine feet and 12 feet, and with tables and chairs must be placed close to against or against the building in such a manner. And I won't go through the rest of it, but what we were looking for was some basic consistency. This was the first draft brought in, brought in front of this council. And what is being proposed, at least in this draft, is that there should be an overall width of four feet available to sidewalk usage. And when I say usage, I mean pedestrians, handicapped, dog walking, all of that. So, Tony, I concur. I think that I like the premise behind a simplified approach to this. But I do believe that four feet doesn't seem to be enough to have two people walk down the street without having to excuse me or walk around signage. And for the record, I think all of us, this whole council, is a big fan of the outdoor dining, is a big fan of the sidewalk use. It brings the outside in and the inside out. When you are not familiar with the town, and you drive through it, it shows life and vitality. We're all are in concurrence in that, at least, I think we are. So, but this in particular, I do, I agree with you. I think that four feet doesn't make sense. I think maybe we can refer this back to the solicitor. Obviously, we don't want to do that yet. I like to hear from the other colleagues and see what their thoughts are.
Mr. Solicitor, can you, do you have any of the, what are the minimum ADA requirements for public right of ways?
Three feet. Three feet is the minimum ADA requirement.
So, one of the things that, I was in support of this because one of the things that we were trying to do was, we were trying to make it a little bit more flexible for businesses to have tables outside. And one of the things that I did was, I took a look at some of the other ordinances that there were out there in other towns like ours. So, I looked at Warren, for instance. Warren had a 40-inch right of way in Warren, irrespective of anything else. All they said was, the bare minimum is a 48-inch right of way. No tables to the side of the building, no anything like that. It was a very streamlined regulation as to how they were doing that. East Greenwich actually surprised me a little bit. They did the bare minimum. So, their bare minimum was 36 inches. So, they were doing the bare minimum for the Americans with Disbillings Act requirements. And so, one of the reasons why I supported this, we did go above and beyond what the minimum ADA requirements are. So, they are 36. What this would do would be, it would bring it up to, it would require 48 inches of unobstructed passage with for public use, exclusives of trees, telephone poles, planters, and utilities. Ultimately, I, you know, I thought it would provide a little bit more flexibility for the businesses to be out there. I also know that a lot more people are wanting to eat outside now. A lot of people still aren't over COVID yet. A lot of people are still worried about going inside because maybe they have long COVID, or they're worried about having, you know, additional COVID, or they have a family member who they're worried about getting exposed to COVID. And so, this was one of the reasons why I would come on in support of this was kind of because of the flexibility. And, you know, Tony, of course, this is, you know, nothing against, you know, your experience with your wife, and I feel really sorry about that.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Chairman. You know, it's very easy for us to sit here, and we go four inches, 36 inches, but let's live in the real world. And that's what I did last night. And it was not very pleasant. And I'm sure it's not very pleasant for parents who have carriages, you know, walking their child down the street. I just can't imagine. I'm sure they have the same difficulty as I had last night. And when people, you know, when I'm going to get run over, my wife, by a waiter who is just, you know, not aware of, just not even paying any attention because he's in a hurry to make sure that tip is going to be a good tip and get to the table, there's a problem. And this is actually crossing the sidewalk, you know. Now, the other point is, the other location that I was, it was not a dining area on the opposite side, but it was very difficult to get through. It was, excuse me, pull over, excuse me, pull over, you know. And the folks that are sitting there at those tables, I'm not sure how comfortable they feel to sit there and listen to this, excuse me. And I know some folks looked at me like with compassion. I don't want compassion, okay? I just want fairness and make accessibility for the folks to be able to walk the sidewalk without having to be interrupted or have to deal with a big hassle, really, in some way. You know, it's very unfortunate that I have to live through this at this time, but it is what it is, and I'm going to make the most of it. And that's the only way that I can get my wife out, and I will continue to do that.
Can I just ask, do you have a suggestion as what you think it should be, like five feet or leave it at seven? I mean, you know, like, I think, I think the work that Aaron did, I mean, that's kind of, I'd like to see maybe a few more of them, like what other towns are doing similar to us, not only here, but nearby communities, maybe Massachusetts or Connecticut, wherever. Just because I think, you know, there are places, there's no question about it, where there's trees and other things that are in the way in certain locations. You know, like maybe every 10 feet or whatever, it still creates a problem. And then there are other places where I've seen dining outside. I would never sit on those sidewalks, you know, in other communities because it is so right on top of the street and the buses and everything else. So, I mean, maybe we do need to send it back, Mr. Chairman, as you said, to, you know, to the solicitor for one more look around as far as what other communities do. We can all take a look and really try to take a look. I mean, I think the point you made about them going out across the sidewalk, that is an issue that should be brought to the attention of the business owner because that had nothing to do with it. That sounds like it's outside in the street dining, and they were rushing to get out there. So, I mean, that's just something people have to pay attention to because not only did you run into that, but it could have been a little kid that could have gotten trampled, things like that. People have to pay attention. And so, I think that's something that we need to make sure that they, the businesses are aware of in those outdoor dining spots that are on the street. Because that's one of the things, and that's one of the issues that came up and precipitated this is, you know, can I get more tables on the sidewalk? Because I have a lot of space, but I don't have a street. So, I would move that we just send it back to the solicitor to take another look and maybe to do some more with our planning department, some more look at how many feet it should be, and then come back to us at the next meeting.
Oh, I'll second the motion. And, oh, sorry, Counsel, were you done? I didn't want to. Okay. Councilman Texera, I'm sorry that you and Jackie went through that. I hope you have a better experience. I'm a big supporter of the outside dining. I think it brings our town a lot of charm. It's another reason to come here, and I want it to work. I think if we rewind to the previous council meeting, we looked at the State Street outside dining design. And we had referred that to the Town Administrative Director of Community Development, Economic Development Director. And to kind of work with a consultant to kind of come up with a design of a seasonal outdoor design that would work around all locations, not just State Street specific. And Councilman Texera, I know we have to adhere to ADA guidelines. And I'm really hoping those next steps that we took at the last council meeting, that that can be applied to the locations that you were at where you had some difficulty. Because I think, Mary, it, once we referring this ordinance back, it would fit nicely back into the proposed design, working with a consultant. And I think the chairman had talked about not just looking at State Street, but looking at, you know, all locations as well. So, and maybe that needs to just be incorporated into that next steps. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
I'm okay with that. I, again, I'll reiterate, I like the goal here. Instead of, if it's nine to 12 feet or six to eight feet, have some consistency. You've got to have X feet. And the X feet should be based off of, Tony, your example is a good one, but it also should be based off of just normal traffic, pedestrian traffic patterns that you can use the sidewalk unencumbered, right? So, but I think we can refer this back to the solicitor and ask, Aaron, you gave a couple of examples of other communities. Maybe if we had some more to know why it works for those other communities, and is it appropriate here? And happy to take a look at it again. So.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would also add to that, you know, if there are any, like, best practices or anything like that from any, like, planning associations or anything like that, that the town solicitor can identify that, you know, represents a, you know, a good sidewalk policy or anything like that, that might be something that we might want to or anything like that, that might be something that we might want to consider the next time around.
It's a great point. I was, and some of us were also here in regards to when we wrote this ordinance. And we spent an enormous amount of time working on this. And I think that, that the general gist of it works really, really well. But again, I think some simplicity and some consistency would, it would benefit from it. So, anything else in this council? So we'll refer to the solicitor and ask with, with all the things we just spoke about.
And I would just like to include, I think it needs to be part of this greater picture as far as the outside designing, design.
So that's a little bit different. I'm okay with that. I don't know if my, if, if everyone is, if we were to refer it, we can make it part of that larger conversation. That means that this does not get addressed until that larger conversation. Is that okay?
I think that we can have that conversation after. Because I think the, this is about dining.
Yes.
And the other was about the outside dining and how that's going to look on the screen. It can be from the parking and so forth. This is like a separate ordinance. So I think we should address this issue.
And then we incorporate that into the next, in the next stage.
Some of those places like on State Street, they have both.
Right.
But other places only have like the outside dining.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yep. Great. So the motion made by Mary, seconded by Tim, was to refer to the solicitor to do some additional research on this with looking for some consistency and looking at other communities for best practice. Did I miss anything? All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Hi. Hi. Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, so to go back to the public hearing. I think we did finish everything else. It will be B1, Public Hearing, Director of Community Development Williamson. In regards to the application for the zoning modifications, zone map change for Arthur Sullivan, Brady Sullivan Properties LLC for the Bristol Yarn Mill redevelopment for 125 Fame Street. It's the WPUD Water Plans Unit Development Waterfront Urban Rehab Land Development Project seeking modifications to the conditional zoning change for density of 98 units to 127 units for minimum commercial space of 22,000 square feet to 6,300 square feet for off-street parking dimensions of 10 feet wide to nine feet wide for lane parking strips of double line marking, single line marking, and to the request for ordinance revisions to Chapter 28 zoning comprehensive zoning code and map revision, Section 28-284D2. I will note for the record that there were some additional items received at the meeting. The council was provided with it here this evening. There's a memo from the town solicitor of frequently asked questions. There's a Robin Rug chronology. There is a memo about the affordable housing. There is the planning board decision, a copy of the planning board decision from 2010. There's also the copy of the zoning change from 2008 and a copy of the zone map change also from 2008. And there's also a late item received by Elaine White of 11 Constitution Street in support of the Robin Rug project.
So as the clerk just said, this is a public hearing. Before I open the public hearing, I'm going to ask the solicitor to take a, a few minutes to explain to this council and to the public. And I don't think I said welcome to the public. There's a whole bunch of you here this evening, so welcome. We apologize for not having as many seats as people. So we appreciate your patience. If you haven't already, just the housekeeping, if you've got a phone on and you probably do, make sure it's on mute, please, so we don't have multiple ringings. Mr. Solicitor, if you would, please take a couple of minutes and give us the guidelines of what this council is considering. And we'll take the next step and I'll open up the public in a moment.
Okay, thank you. Um, I prepared a memo for the council which you have, which is entitled Frequently Asked Questions. Taking a, taking a page from what we see a lot of websites, whatnot, what, what are people asking the questions? Even government websites and so forth to try to do that. So I will just kind of follow that general outline to, to try to answer the question. I guess I'll just start with a little bit though of pointing out that, so what's before you legally is a request to change. It's technically referred to as a request to change the zoning map. But it's really not. The council changed the zoning map back in 2008. And that's one of the documents you have for this property. And as part of that 2008 zoning amendment, what we're calling the zoning map amendment, provided for some conditions, including probably the most significant issue before you tonight is the question of how many units will go in this location. I'm not going to go through a background of what Robin Rug is and whatnot. I, I'm assuming everybody knows that. Everybody's been there, seen it. So, but that's, that's kind of what the, the biggest thing that there was a condition to that decision on the map change, limiting it to the absolute number of residential units shall not exceed 98. Now, there were other conditions there. There were also other conditions dealt with, with the fact that the, the town council in that zoning map change in 2008 adopted as its own findings, all of the findings and recommendation of the planning board at that time. And that in fact is, it's stapled together with the, the decision on the zoning map changes, one page. And then there's several pages, four more pages of the planning board. And in fact, they're all recorded together in the land evidence records. And there are certain conditions there that you're being asked to change as well. Significantly dealing with the amount of commercial space that's there. And some other questions, including also the affordable housing. I think that's probably the other major, major question that, that you have before you tonight. You're also being asked to make changes as you were, and that night back in 2008, you're being asked to make changes to the text of the zoning ordinance because there is a section in the text that deals with this particular zone. The urban rehab plan, urban rehab land development, waterfront zone and the idea of what an urban rehab land development, which is, used to be called a waterfront or was occasionally called then a waterfront planned unit development. Same thing. And there are some changes to the text of the ordinance basically to conform so that there, any changes you make to one will work with the other. And in fact, I'm, I'm sure one of the most contentious issues tonight will probably be dealing with a density section of that text ordinance about how many units can be there based on the gross floor area of the building. And as I'll, I'll get to in a moment, I, I think that was something that was inconsistent from the beginning in 2008. And we're suggesting that it be changed so we eliminate that inconsistency going forward, no matter what number you might pick as far as the number of allowable units. So one of the first things I think is that might help people to understand is, as I put it, what's with the back and forth between the planning board and the town council? And why can't just one of you decide? Now, if this were a comprehensive permit, which provided at least 25% affordable housing, actually, it would be a one-stop shopping experience for the developer at the planning board. And the council would not be involved. But it is not. It relates back to that prior zoning amendment. And it is before you now in that posture of what's called a major land development. In other words, this urban rehab plan development, urban rehab development is the technical term under the, the Rhode Island general law is major land development project. And that's what it is. And being a major land development project, it needs approval from the planning board. But also in this case, as, as I've just gone over, it needs approval from you to amend the zoning. State law provides a process. What do you do if there are two bodies that need to approve it? And one of them is the town council. And this grew up because of the problem that happened before 1992, when this wasn't clear. There was that question, the planning board would approve one thing, the council would change it. Does that mean it overrode the planning board or what? So the General Assembly as part of this act, the Development Review Act of 1992, put in this three-stage process. The applicant is to go to the planning board for the first step of approval, which is master plan and also to get a recommendation for the action of the town council that's necessary. Then they come to the town council. That's where you are now, step two. Step three would be going back to the planning board for what's called preliminary plan approval stage at the planning board. Although it's called preliminary plan, essentially that is the major and most intense section of review. I'll just step aside to the, the elements of review for major land development project going through the planning board. There's four steps. There's pre-application, which is a formal step. The applicant has the right to require it. The town requires it, come in before you, tell us what you're planning to do. That's called pre-application. That's step one. Step two, master plan. Master plan is what it sounds like, a master plan. What's the overall nature of the project? And it generally, it is not intended to provide all of the details and answers that you're going to ask and receive through the preliminary review thing. The idea is to get to the developer before they've spent so much money developing plans and projects that they're not willing to make any changes. The idea is to get to it in an early stage. The public sees it, the developer has the process to see the public input. The town sees it, there's a chance to look at the overall basis, but not at a point where the developer is locked into anything. And in fact, that happened here. There was a technical review committee meeting, the Burnside Building back, I think in December. A lot of people, there was a site visit, which actually included members of the public all through Robin Rug. So everybody got to actually walk through these several hundred thousand square feet of space and see it. That's all part of that master plan process culminating in the decision which you have before you in your packet, the, the item B1, the decision and the recommendation from the planning board. So you've got, that, that's why you have to have the multiple stage. Technically, the planning board does not review normally things like a traffic report, economic impact or fiscal impact report, the detailed drainage and sewer calculations. Those things are normally not done until the preliminary stage. You know, there's just preliminary, like, you know, yeah, do we have sewer lines that run there? Okay. The details of what do the sewer lines have to be? How much flow is going to come through those sewer lines? How much do they have to be increased? What the developer is going to pay to increase the sewer capacity? Same thing with drainage, so forth. All that would come at preliminary. Some of that stuff has been done even at master plan here. Although some of it was also based on the, from 2008 to 2010 time period. But I just want to remind you that you, you wouldn't normally see that level of detail. That will be for the planning board when it goes back there, as well as any other permits which are required such from the state, such as DEM or CRMC or State Historic Preservation and Heritage Commission. Those, those would normally come later. Again, some of them we know because this property, although a, a different project and a different developer, this property was before the planning board from 2009, 2010. So for example, we know from State Historic Preservation and Heritage Commission has already rejected the idea of selective demolition, taking down some of the buildings to create new corridors. That state agency has already said, no, you can't do that for the historic preservation element. So some of those things we happen to know, even though we normally wouldn't know that till a later stage. So the next question, I guess, is, is what options do you as a town council have tonight? Just procedurally, when you get through with this, you can continue the public hearing. If you're not through, we run out of time, you have more questions, more evidence needs to be coming in, you can do that. You can close the public hearing and continue the proposal to a date certain for deliberation and discussion. If you've heard everything on the public hearing, but you need time to consider it or you want to have a draft findings of fact, draft decisions, things like that, you can continue it for a different date for deliberate deliberation and decision. Although closing the public hearing, just remembering you will not be able to hear anything new as far as evidence or public testimony at the next meeting, if you do close the public hearing. And then finally, or you could close the hearing and actually deliberate and decide tonight, if you're comfortable with it. Substantively, what can you do as far as what kind of, kind of answer can you, can you give? And this is where I need to point out that you have the planning board recommendation in front of you. And you can follow that or not. That is not binding on you. However, it is, there's a requirement in that Section 28-51 sub two of the zoning ordinance. And I put this in the memo too, that the town council may not make any decisions that are inconsistent with the findings of the planning board unless the council makes their own findings of facts present in the record that the findings of the planning board are in clear error or clearly exceed their authority. So this is something, again, which was enacted by a council. It could be unenacted at some other time, but this is what the requirement is at the moment. So if you, if you do want to differ from what the planning board recommended, you need to make your own findings to make that clear, why, why you're disagreeing with the planning board and, and why you think they were in error or exceeded their authority. So thus, you can either adopt their recommendation and pass it as presented. You can deny it, the whole amendments, or you can further amend and change it, but only if you make your own findings. Where do we go from here? What happens next? That obviously depends on what action you take. But if you, if you vote to deny the amendments, essentially the matter is dead. If the applicant wants to modify the plans, then they'll have to return the planning board for a new master plan approval and recommendation. If you vote to approve, either as is or with conditions, there'll be a slight detour to the zoning board because some of the objectors have filed an appeal of the major land development project master plan decision. That appeal goes to the zoning board sitting as the board of appeal. So that would be, if, if you approve it, that would be the next step to deal with that appeal. And then if the zoning board votes to sustain, in other words, in favor of the appeal, then the matter will go back to the planning board and need to start over for master plan review. If the zoning board votes to deny the appeal, then the project will proceed to preliminary stage review before the planning board. If you've approved it with changes or conditions different from the planning board recommendations with the findings, as I've discussed, the planning board will need to review and approve of those changes as part of its preliminary plan review. It doesn't have to go back to master plan, but it will still have to be reviewed. And if it doesn't approve with its appropriate findings, it, it might deny the application at that stage. Or conceivably could refer it back, it could, it could come back, it could ping pong back still again to the town council in the future, although that's probably not likely. Let's just talk about affordable housing a moment. And you have a separate memo from the Director of Community Development. And I'll, I'll leave that to her to, if you've got questions and whatnot. I'll also note from her that you've got the chronology of everything from December 22nd, 2006 to June 22nd, 2010, which was the previous application process. But affordable housing, I'll kind of talk about the legal framework. Her memo talks about more of the details and whatnot and what that means in dollars and cents. But on the legal side, the first thing I note is going back to 2008 and zoning. And when those 2008 zoning amendment that was adopted, which you're asking to be, to amend now, Bristol didn't have what we call inclusionary zoning. Inclusionary zoning is the idea, if you're going to do a development, we have a state mandate to provide 10% of our housing as affordable housing. If we don't require all new developments to provide at least 10% of affordable housing, we will go backwards. If we require all new developments to have ten percent of affordable housing, we will stay where we are. But we will never get closer to the, we don't meet the ten percent now and we'll never get any closer to it. So inclusionary zoning is the idea that all new developments must provide a certain percentage of, um, affordable housing, um, as part of what they're doing. And in that, in the case now in Bristol, it's twenty percent. And at the time in two thousand and eight, we didn't have the inclusionary zoning in the ordinance. So what was done, as I mentioned, the planning board's recommendation was adopted by the town council as part of that two thousand and eight map change. So as part of that two thousand and eight map change, it states development condition number two. Affordable housing. The developer is to provide a minimum of ten percent and no more than twenty percent affordable units either onsite, offsite, or by fee in lieu to affordable housing, housing trust fund as agreed to by the planning board during the major land development process. So that's what's there now, if you will. This was a zoning amendment, specific, a, a, a map change applied to this parcel. It doesn't expire. It's still in effect. That's what's, that's what's controlling the amount of affordable housing on this property at the moment without any change from you up till tonight. It's that requirement, minimum of ten percent, no more than twenty percent. And the mix, whether it's onsite of the development itself, offsite somewhere else in the town, or by a fee in lieu to be worked out by the planning board as part of the planning board process. That's, that's what's there now. So now, um, along comes the, um, major land development approval in two thousand and ten by the planning board. And at that point, the planning board granted approval, which required ten units, which would have been ten percent of the ninety-eight units which were then allowed. And it didn't decide the location. It said the location of the ten affordable housing units onsite or offsite to be made prior to preliminary plan stage. So it kicked the onsite, offsite question down the road. Now, that particular approval being an approval of the planning board expired. It stayed in effect for many years because the general assembly extended the expiration period for all land use approvals. Following the two thousand and eight crash, the general assembly extended it for many years. But I think around about two thousand and nineteen, it, I'm not sure the exact date, but it, it finally expired. So that's, that's not there at all, but that's for historical purposes. That's what it had been. Also interesting is that in two thousand and ten, um, town council adopted a, a variety of zoning amendments. I think, you know, we, we tend to call them phases. That was phase four. That was like the fourth comprehensive zoning review since you know, the new zoning enabling act in nineteen ninety-one. But every five years, you've been looking at it. What do we need to change? Kind of following comprehensive plan updates. And so there was a comprehensive zoning update on March thirty-first, two thousand and ten. Now I just got to note, coincidentally, that actually happens to be a few months before that major land development approval that I just referenced happened. But nothing there applied to it because that, that approval ha- application had been going on since two thousand and eight. So it was already grandfathered in, um, and these didn't apply. But in two thousand and ten, um, that's when Bristol put in requirements that people were going to have to provide twenty percent of affordable housing for any new development. And at the time, there was the opportunity to either have it offsite, onsite, or fee in lieu. So that brings me to question, what the heck is fee in lieu? So fee in lieu, and, and I think this is for the benefit of the public. I think you probably do know, but fee in lieu meant as an option, you could either provide one of, you know, if you had ten units, you could provide two of them there onsite for affordable housing. You could perhaps provide offsite. If you had ten, you could provide two other units offsite elsewhere in town, or you could pay if the, that would go to an entity, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund or some other nonprofit entity, which would be going to, that entity would then use it to provide additional affordable housing. However, at the time in two thousand and ten, when this was adopted, the state law basically allowed the local authority, the planning board could decide what they want. Do they want offsite? Do they want onsite? They want the fee in lieu, and the fee was abs- actually much larger. Fee was much larger and construction costs were much smaller. So that the fee in lieu was kind of able to build a single family unit. If you took the land cost out. If you gave a density bonus, if you, if you didn't have the cost of land, you could pretty much afford to build a small house with the fee in lieu at that time in two thousand and ten. State law changed and took the option away from the planning board and gave it to the other side, to the developers and the builders. They have the option now to decide whether they want offsite, onsite. And what the law said is if you have fee in lieu, they have that option as well, although you didn't have to have fee in lieu. And Rhode Island Housing came up with this plan and the numbers of what the fees would be based on communities. And in my humble opinion, I think they're kind of backwards because the fee is the lowest in expensive communities and highest in the, the cheapest communities. But for Bristol, it's about forty thousand dollars per unit, which clearly will not pay for a unit even without land cost. There's no way, we won't pay for a, a single family standalone. It might pay for part of a multifamily unit in a large enough unit, but it, we won't pay for that. So the town subsequently removed fee in lieu as an option from the ordinance, which was the only way to avoid getting stuck with that low fee. So fee in lieu was, was not an option now for anyone else. It's still an option on the table for this particular project, Robin Rug or Bristol Yarn Mill, because they still have that two thousand and eight zoning map amendment in effect. So that's why it's still there after all these years and the changes. So as to affordable housing, um, basically, um, what the planning board did was they compromised at fifty percent, which was, um, twenty units as rounded up from the one hundred and twenty-seven total units. And they, um, required three of those to be, now I, I call it onsite because they're in the houses immediately across the street from Robin Rug, which in two thousand and eight, the council required that the parking lots and the houses across the street on the east side of Thane Street that were owned by the same owner be included in the project. And they still are today. Um, and in fact, that's why they're shown on the map. I know people were concerned when they saw the map and the paper and it included all the stuff east of Thane Street, but it is in fact, there's not a proposed change to those as far as the zoning, but they're still covered by these restrictions. They can't be used for anything else. And that would be where there would be three units, whether you call them onsite or offsite. There'd be three units there and then seventeen would be fee in lieu at forty thousand per unit. As noted before, you know, with the proper findings, you do not have to accept that. You have, if you make your own findings, you can require anywhere from ten to twenty percent affordable housing um, and may set the mixture of onsite and offsite and fee as well. You have to make the findings as to, um, why, why yours is, um, why the planning board was in error and beyond the authority, but you have that, you have that. The developer doesn't have the rights beyond that. Now you can't set it at twenty-five percent because it was set at twenty back then. You've got that, that, that range there, but that is, that's where you've got the authority to do. Um, and then finally, I, I'll just come back to what I started with mentioning about the, the number of units and the gross floor area per dwelling unit. Usual zoning control on density, um, for some sort of as of right use is usually what we call lot area per dweller. And that's actually the basis for a lot of our zoning. You know, we've got an R six zone at six thousand square feet. That's needed as a minimum lot size, particularly with the single family zones. That's the lot area for dwelling in it. You're in an R twenty zone, you need twenty thousand square feet of lot area, land area for that one unit. You're in R forty, you need forty thousand square feet. Then we have further density controls in our more dense areas. You know, even in R six where we allow more than single family, we do allow duplexes and whatnot, but we still regulate it based on land area. That doesn't work well when you have a very large building on a relatively small lot, which you have here in this situation. Um, and it's also further exaggerated when you've got historic nature of the structure, um, which is, which is why this whole property is considered unique. People may say this is spot zoning. Yes, this is spot zoning, but it is not illegal spot zoning. Illegal spot zoning is where you take something out of character with like properties around it and change it and not consistent with the comprehensive plan. This is, comprehensive plan is full of references to this particular project. And this was specifically designed, um, it, it's pretty unique with the, the large size of this mill building. It's the last waterfront mill building that's still not redeveloped to, um, a different use. So when you look at that, it doesn't seem to make sense to have lot area per dwelling unit. And at the time, we tried to come up with something else and what we came up with was gross floor area of the building per dwelling unit. That was what was tried. That too had problems, including, you know, how do you calculate it? When someone comes in with the application, do you calculate it with, what's the gross floor area when they start? Or is it at the end after they've done things that you want? If they've demolished areas or combined areas or created atriums, do you calculate that gross floor area? How, how do you calculate it? That was, was one of the issues. And in hindsight, the control wasn't even necessary for something like this because no dwelling units can be built as a right in that property, except I guess one. If you wanted to have one dwelling unit in the whole place, that would be as of right. But beyond that, none of that is allowed in this zone. It has to be, um, a land development project, which means it's got to be reviewed and approved by the planning board on that four-step process. So it's not really necessary to have that control of a density based on that, um, lot area per dwelling unit or the floor area per dwelling unit. The real correct number of units is the result of the review based on all the other aspects, the infrastructure, what's there? Is the sewer there to support it? Is the drainage? Is the traffic going to be a problem? Are the streets servicing it? Is there parking? Fiscal impact on the community, the historic concerns, that's part of the comprehensive plan too, to preserve the structure. All of that has to be looked at together as part of this four-stage review process to see what's the appropriate number of units. And in, in action, that was clearly what happened in two thousand and eight. The, the town council picked a number and said a number. That was the town council's determination at that point as to what was the appropriate number of units. And so consequently, part of the text changes that have been made have been to remove that section entirely that had a formula. It had two thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet of gross floor area for dwelling unit. That might have allowed up to a hundred and twenty-six units based on the gross floor area. There's a lot of dispute as to what the gross floor area is. And I think that our position is, it doesn't really matter. That was not a good valid measurement tool to begin with. The measurement tool needs to be with these other factors. So that's what I think we would recommend to you as you're considering it. That's, that's what to do. It's, it's not illegal to remove an arbitrary formula from the zoning ordinance and replace it with the discretion of the permitting authority. And then it's just the question, the, the planning board has said one hundred and twenty-seven units. It's up to you to decide if you're comfortable with that number as well and based on your own findings, as I've talked about several times. So I've talked longer than I wanted to and probably longer than you wanted me to, but thank you.
So thank you for all that information. Obviously, we're going to reference back, uh, would ask more questions. I am going to open up the public hearing.
I, I don't know if you want to just have Diane talk briefly about the affordable housing.
Thank you. You're absolutely correct. Diane.
Uh, thank you. I put together a memo for the council's, um, information on affordable housing. I thought it was important. We get a lot of questions about what does that mean? What does it mean in terms of income, maximum income, rent and so forth. So I just did a little background and I included the, um, the chart that, that HUD uses, but I'll, so Rhode Island Housing annually calculates the percentage of low and moderate income housing each of the Rhode Island communities. Um, state law requires that we track that number. Bristol has a total of five hundred and twenty-two low to moderate income units, which is five point seven percent of the year-round residential units. And the year-round housing units is based on the twenty-ten census because they're waiting for a release of the, uh, the detailed twenty-twenty census. As the solicitor mentioned, state law sets the goal for municipalities to have a ten percent, to have ten percent of year-round housing stock as low to moderate income. So we're, we're, we're close to six. We can't quite get over six, but we're close. And then the question of, um, what is income for a low to moderate income household? And Rhode Island Housing also provides a chart which I've given you and it's used to determine eligibility and it's based on the number of people in the household. And the chart lists the maximum amount the household can earn to qualify for an affordable unit. State law re- requires that for rental units, the maximum amount of income is eighty percent of area median income. And for, for sale units, it's a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. And the, um, chart references I use, for example, a three-person household at eighty percent of area median income in Bristol, the maximum income to qualify for, um, an affordable rental unit would be sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And then you, the next, uh, part of my memo real speaks to the, the, um, how you calculate maximum rent. And the rent cannot be more than thirty percent of your income under the law. So the amount of rent is based on the number of bedrooms plus one person. So for example, a two-bedroom unit, you calculate the rent based on the chart using the eight percent of area median income, which I just referenced, sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty. So it's two bedrooms plus one person equals the three persons. You can't have more than thirty percent of the household income, including utilities. So you would take the annual, um, six thousand, six hundred, I'm sorry, sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty divided by twelve times thirty percent, and that gives you the rent per month, which is about, um, one thousand, seven hundred dollars. So that would be the maximum rent. And along with these affordable housing units that we are constantly striving for, we connect people with monitoring agents because the monitoring agent makes sure all of the units, the landlords and the renters are all in compliance. We have two that we work with. One is East Bay Community Development Corporation and the other one is, um, Community Housing Land Trust. And they have a fee for the initial certification of five hundred dollars and then it's two percent of the maximum rent for the annual recertification. That's what East Bay Community Housing, East Bay Community Development Corporation charges. And it's a little bit more for the, um, Community Housing Land Trust. They charge a thousand per unit initially and then three point five percent of the maximum gross rent for the annual recertification. And the annual fee would change every year as the rent changes, but their percentage stays the same. So that's just a little background. And then I, I've copied excerpts from the state laws that have the definitions for you. So you can see that the definition in our zoning ordinance mirrors this, the general law for the affordable housing and the low to moderate income housing. So that's just a little background.
Thank you, Diane. Okay. So I'm going to open up the public hearing. Couple of rules. First, this council, I will call for, um, in favor, and then I will call for against. Anyone who wants to speak will be allowed to speak. It has been our process to allow two minutes to anyone that is, uh, looking to speak. And the exception to that is the petitioner themselves, obviously. It's going to take longer than two minutes to share their, whether it's this or any petitioner. You gave immense respect. You gave immense respect to the solicitor and Diane as they shared their thoughts. I ask for that same respect for anyone that stands up there and shares their thoughts. When you come up to speak, I need you to state your name and address for the record. At that point, I will start a timer and I will raise my hand at about ten seconds or so to give you time to finish. I will allow you to finish your thought. But if we go over time or if people take advantage of that, then I will not allow you to finish your thought. At two minutes, I will cut you off, okay? I don't want to do that, I would like you to share your thoughts. But I ask you to be brief, I know a CEO that I quote all the time, be brief, be brilliant, be gone, it's wonderful way of sharing, right? So we value your thoughts, we want to hear what you want to say. I ask that you stay on topic, the reason why the solicitor took that amount of time to share all of this. Was to help us all understand what we're considering and also what we're not considering. As you heard from the solicitor, this is going to go back in front of the planning board depending on what the next steps are. So the particulars of the project, the color of the windows, all of those things is just a quick example. That is not this council's purview. It is this council's purview ultimately to decide whether or not there should be these amount of units or anything else that is in our purview to discuss. So I will now open up the public hearing, I'm going to ask, I'm going to give everyone, uh, I'm going to ask the, for all in favor. I'm sorry, anyone that is speaking in favor and then I will ask for against. If you're not sure, feel free to put yourself anywhere you think you belong, whether it's in favor or against. It's okay, because maybe you're in the middle of the road and that's okay too, okay? So, um, at this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing, is there anyone here to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a, a point of order, I have, uh, I represent Friends of Historic Bristol, Stephen Gilroy. And I have a couple procedural, actually procedural arguments for why this should be gone forward, uh, at least in its present form.
So I'm going to ask you, you can address these directly to the solicitor because I'm just going to ask him anyway, so go ahead.
If you want me to go now, I figured it'd make more sense if, if the board does decide not to go over before everybody else talks to.
I have no objection to that, please, thank you. I ask that you stay to your points of, of only whether or not this is, and Andy, I'm going to ask, I, at, at any point you believe this is out of order, please help me with it.
Can I just get the name again?
Sure, Steve or Steven with a P H, Mac Gilvray.
Can you spell your name for the record, please?
Yeah, sure. No, no problem, everybody asked, it's M A C, capital G I L L I V as in Victor, R A Y.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you, you're, you're giving me this time. These are some important procedural arguments for how we go forward tonight. And I'm going to leave the substance to the citizens because I think that's best coming from them. The, these are just purely, uh, legal and procedural points. They're important nonetheless, I know from my past experience with this council that, that you consider following the correct procedure to be important. I'd like to pass up just a packet, so I don't have to go back and forth with, with. Material, they're, they're, they're thick altogether, but they're very slim, each one of them. And they don't consist of additions to the record, they're just, uh, the docket, the, the. Documents that are already in the town records. That I'm just going to be referring to and it just might be helpful for you to be able to look at them as I go through them.
That's okay, but I must tell you that we can either listen to you or we can read the documents, so there's no way that we can kind of, I want to make this brief.
Oh, no.
The opportunities.
Yeah, yeah.
Bring those up, please make your points.
I, I, I understand, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it, so I'm going to pass these out now.
Could you make sure the clerk gets a copy too?
All right, so as I said, three, three legal arguments. And procedural arguments, the first is that this matter is stayed. He, as Mr. Tights correctly explained, this is part of one unified process. Where a master or major development gets approved. And there's a wave that it bounces back and forth between planning board, zoning board, town council. And he's described that better than I can. There was a. As you know, the, the planning board considered the, the master plan approval and they considered certain zoning ordinance changes. Now they made a decision to grant the conditional master plan approval and they acted to recommend certain. Changes to you. And to the. To the zoning conditions. The Friends of Historic Bristol appealed that decision as Mr. Tights has said. Pursuant to section eight eleven C of the Bristol subdivision and development review regulations. Now that's the first document here and you can look at it if you want or you can listen to me either way, um, I thought it'd be helpful to have it. But it states that an appeal to the Board of Appeals, which is what the Friends of Historic Bristol have taken. From a decision or action of the board, which is what we have here, a decision and an action to recommend. Uh, may be taken by an agreed party, which is what we've done. Section D on page forty six, the next page says, an appeal shall stay all proceedings in furtherance of the action being appealed. This most certainly. Is a proceeding in furtherance of the action that's appealed and that is the recommendation. And decision. This matter, under the, the town's own rules, is therefore stayed. Now, I'm not asking. For anything draconian, um, not asking that you deny anything, um, but just that you dot your i's and cross your t's on this one. And that you wait until the zoning board. Here's the appeal before you consider the amendment. Because that's what the rules require. Now you're probably saying to yourself, yeah, but you're going to appeal that, you're a lawyer, you'll appeal to superior court and we'll, we'll have to wait even longer. That's not the case, there's, there's no automatic stay when you appeal, uh, the zoning board decision. So you just have to wait until the zoning board rules, which I think is going to be later this summer. Sitting as a board of appeal and then you can consider this properly, until then it stayed under your own rules, um, very plain language. So that's a, that's the first argument and I think it's. It, it's not a difficult one, you just look at the plain language and it says all proceedings, this is a proceeding. In furtherance, this is certainly in furtherance is just described by Mr. Tights, are stayed. So the second, um, argument which is equally as important is. There's a procedure that you're supposed to follow and, and Mr. Tights laid out part of it. But you're supposed to receive a recommendation from the planning board. Once you get that recommendation, you can do all the things that Mr. Tights talked about. But you don't have a recommendation right now to alter section two eight four D two. You just don't have that recommendation because the planning board didn't have an application. For that change and it didn't consider it during its deliberations. So, uh, how, how do we, so, so there are two restraints on this site, one is the condition, which is ninety eight units. Then there's other text in the actual ordinance, section two eighty four D two, that has this gross floor area. Of two thousand two hundred and fifty square feet per unit. So this, it's kind of built in suspenders, but it's not uncommon, um, that you have those two requirements. And the developer in the town have said, uh, up to this point at least. That the gross floor area requirement of two eighty four D two doesn't matter because they can get a hundred and twenty six, a hundred and twenty seven units in already. And that was their position before the planning board. Nevertheless, they're asking tight that you amend both the condition and two eighty four. D two. Now, y- y- you'll have seen from the ordinance that when the planning official receives an application for zoning change. They're immediately supposed to give it both to the planning board and the zoning and the town council. And the planning board makes recommendations within forty five days. And so if you look, um, and this is the third document you'll have, this is the original application from Brady Sullivan LLC. For the zoning modification. And you'll see it says applicant is seeking a modification of certain of the conditions attached to the conditional zoning change. For this property adopted by the town council in two thousand and eight. So what they're looking for is the change to the, to the ninety eight. Presumably so they can go up to one twenty seven, which they feel they can do given the existing gross floor area. They do not make a request to change two eighty four D two, just not there, it's not in the application that came in. When is it? November thirty of twenty one. So the, the next document, this was advertised. Town is very careful with these things, they advertise them, they do an agenda. And if you look at the agenda. And this is similar to the other agenda that were produced, uh, during the planning board's several meetings on this topic. And this is the next document, it states that the planning board also, planning board also to make recommendation to the town council. On the proposed change of zone request to amend the original zone change conditions, okay? So you got the conditions there on the mill property and to change the zone and the parking properties. To the waterfront planned unit development, so that's what's advertised and that's what's on the agenda for these meetings before the planning board. No mention of modifying the gross floor area requirement of two thousand two hundred and fifty feet per unit. And if you need to, to see kind of the difference, you can look and this is the next document, which you've probably just looked at earlier today, this is your agenda for tonight. And it's markedly different. It again asks, uh, for modifications to conditional zoning changes. But it also at the end, the last bit, and this is something that was in no previous document before the planning board. In the request for ordinance revisions to chapter twenty eight zoning comprehensive zoning code and map provision, section twenty eight two eighty four D two. So here for the first time in this agenda for tonight, they're asking for a change to the zoning ordinance language, specifically two eighty four D two. Next document is the, the board minutes and this is the, this is the board minutes from, um, the April fourteenth twenty two meeting. And it states that, um, I've got this highlighted in the first page. Planning board also to make recommendation to the town council on the proposed change of zone requested to amend original zone change conditions. Again, so just the conditions, no mention of two eighty four D two, that's what was discussed. Before the planning board, that's what was advertised, that's what was on the agenda, no mention of two eighty four D two. Now, in, in their final meeting and, and with the decision that you have before you today from the planning board. They added some language in the very last meeting that says, changes to the conditions and the text needs to be changed too. And that was something that was put in after the public comment. A- after the initial draft opinion was dra- or decision was drafted and it was made by the planning board, it's very last minute. Still adopted by the planning board, but it just says the text. Now, how is anybody to know, how, how does, how do you get to affect it? Or how do you get to the proposition that's being forwarded tonight that, that means you're changing two eighty four D two? That that's a recommendation to you to change two eighty four D two. Well, it wasn't heard, wasn't asked for. It's not in the decision. In fact, the decision. If you look at it, and this is not in your packet, but. The decision. Doesn't require a change. Or recommend to change to, uh, two eighty four D two, in fact. Looking for now. In paragraph ten on page six, conclusion of law, this is again the planning board's conclusion of law. Uh, as drafted by the city solicitor, town solicitor, the proposal is consistent with the provisions of the zoning ordinance, including section two eighty, uh, twenty eight, two eighty four D two. So the existing decision says it's already consistent, it already meets the requirements. When they ask for a hundred and twenty seven units, we have enough gross, uh, floor space, we don't need to change two eighty four D two. And that's also echoed in the memo that you received tonight from Mr. Tights. At the bottom of page five says, back in two thousand and eight when they did this, they said ninety eight. But probably a hundred and twenty six was allowed if you, if you applied the gross floor area, so they're two separate things. They're not really in, in, in conflict, they're built in suspenders, they're two separate requirements. So was there ever a request made, I mean, the, the, the rules of the town require a request to be made for a zoning change. That's an absolute certainty, if you look at the, at the, at the rules. Was there a request ever made? Certainly not before the planning board considered it. There was actually a request made though, from the applicant. And why, how do we know this wasn't before the planning board? But the, the request came in on May twenty fourth, after the decision was recorded. And that's the next document you have. A, a letter, make twenty fourth letter from Benson and Jen- Jenkins, Jestings. And for the first, they call it amended application for zoning map change. So. Here you have something that this, the planning board has not been referred to the planning board, planning board has not considered this amended application. And what does this, um, uh, application ask for? It says on page two of the, the summary in the second paragraph. The applicant also requests, and this is the new part. The text of section two eighty four D two be amended to remove the gross floor area requirement. That's the request that came in on May twenty fourth, has not been forwarded to the planning board. You have no recommendation before you with respect to two eighty four D two. And without a recommendation, you can't move forward.
So let's stop right there, Andy, would you respond?
Sure, um, I've only got two items, although you said you had three.
Yeah.
So the, okay.
Last one's very, very short.
Andy, respond, please, thank you, please, please respond.
Okay, so as to, as to number one. I have in fact, um, this question of whether the matter is stayed by the appeal of the planning board decision to the zoning board as the board of appeal. I did consider this back in early June when the appeal was filed, was researched, I actually discussed this with Mr. McGilvery and Mr. McCoy. And after that, um, I did provide an opinion that I believe it is not stayed. There is a difference between a decision and a recommendation. And it is my opinion that only the decision. Of the planning board and actions in furtherance of that decision. Which were delayed to the major land development project are stayed, so in other words, they cannot go on to preliminary plan. Until the appeal is dealt with. I do not believe it applies to the recommendation as to the zoning amendment. I don't know of any case law out there specifically one way or the other on this, but that is, um, my interpretation of reading it. And, um, so, um, and at the time that I spoke to Mr. McGilvery about a month ago. He had, did not object to that when we talked about that we'd be setting a date for the zoning board, a special meeting sometime during the summer following tonight's hearing. That's neither here nor, I, I don't think that might necessarily, that wouldn't be a legal waiver, but I do think it's important. That he, he raises it only now, actually it was raised at five fifteen PM on Monday. So my opinion has not changed since early June, I do not think this council has stayed from acting on it. It is, if your pleasure, if you decide you would like to delay, you have that ability, but you are not legally stayed from hearing it tonight.
Issue two? Or issue three?
Well, that was issue one.
Can I, can I, can, can I just take?
No, I want him to go.
Okay. No problem, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. No problem, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
Okay, issue two. It's my opinion that. This section twenty eight to eighty four D two was always part and parcel of the discussion. Of the new number of units. From the T R C forward, I think even. The discussion about how many units and the density included both the map change and the ninety eight. Are we staying with ninety eight? If not, some other number and the discussion. That was held over several planning board meetings of weather number. This issue was raised repeatedly. And it was raised by objectors that this was this was an issue. So this is. This is not something that is new. It was it added specifically? Yes, it came and it was discussed at that final meeting. With the language of the discussion because in fact it was still causing so much confusion. And so the specifics, but the general conflict between these sections and how they applied. Was something that was discussed and before the planning board. In no way is this something the planning board never heard about. And just popped up at the last minute. So I do not think that the planning board recommendation is flawed. I think the. Planning board recommendation is valid to go forward. What he raises might be something that he may want to raise on appeal to tonight's hearing if he wants to, but I don't think procedurally. It stops you from going forward.
Mr. McGilvery, I'm sorry, Andy.
Yeah, I just have a question, if I may ask of Mr. McGilvery as part of. What what property in Bristol does the friends of historic Bristol own? What real estate?
I I don't know the question, the answer to that question.
They don't own any, do they?
I I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, I mean, this is a public hearing. Everybody's entitled to speak, but I will be also challenging. The standing of the Friends of Historic Bristol, not individuals, but Friends of Historic Bristol that don't doesn't own property. Is not a party that may properly appeal a decision of the planning board.
And that's that's an that's an argument we can have another day, but and it's a hyper technical legal argument. When what I want to make sure the board doesn't do is is step out of line procedurally and event and cause this. These proceedings to actually take longer than they need to. So what I'm recommending.
So what's what's number three?
Yes. Let me just, I'm just gonna finish one and two, if you don't mind, because I'm not asking that the board just stop completely. And I'm sorry, the council stop. With respect to that second argument, you have a couple of options. You can take the the planning board decision, which only talks about the. That the the conditions. And you can say, yes, we will modify the conditions according to that plan, but we're not going to modify. The actual ordinance two eighty four because A, it's not in their recommendation and B, we don't have to. That will allow, according to the town, that will allow them to have one hundred and twenty seven units under that that formulation that's been their position all along. And it won't cause you to step out of line. So you just modify the the ninety eight to one twenty seven. You leave the the formula in place. It hasn't and it hasn't been considered Mr. Tights's. Discussion of the legalities is not testimony. You have to look at the record. So that that's what I would suggest is that you take a middle ground and just look at the condition, which is the ninety eight. And not the two eighty four D two, which is not properly before you. Okay, and that will allow the application to go forward. As written to the next step without any further delay. So the 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 last. The in in and I should say that that's in the the Mr. Tights memo that presently one twenty six, one twenty seven is allowed. Under the existing two eighty four D two. Okay, so it allows you to step away from the the procedural error. But still move forward with the hundred, the applicant moves forward with one hundred and twenty seven. And of course, insulates of the town council from any allegation that they've acted procedurally improperly. So I'm not asking for anything unreasonable. I'm just.
Mr. McGilvery, I've been really patient.
Sure, and I I understand.
Really have been. You have. And there's a whole bunch of people here, townspeople, non-townspeople. I don't care either way. I want everybody to have an opportunity. I've given you a lot of latitude. Please get to your point.
Okay, I appreciate Mr. Chairman. The the final argument or procedural error, and this is a very short one, it's the illegal spot zoning. And the illegal spot zoning is when you zone a single lot or small area. With and give them privileges that are not extended to other land in the vicinity. That's the first prong. The second prong, and it's generally against sound public policy. And designed to serve the best interest of the community as a whole. Okay, I'm only addressing the first prong. That this most certainly gives privileges to this one lot. The second prong, and you'll enjoy this, Mr. Chairman, is a segue to the rest of the public comment tonight. Which is that I think you'll hear a lot of comment that this change is against sound public policy. And it's not designed to serve the best interest of the community as a whole. So it therefore constitutes legal spot zoning.
Andy, could you?
Yeah.
What I'm asking is directly, I think you've addressed. I'll make sure my colleagues concur. But could you address your legal opinion on us taking the next step for this public hearing?
Sure.
Please.
So I will. As far as number three, I think that's a substantive argument. That's not a procedural. Whether it's illegal spot zoning or not. So that's that's not a procedural argument. You should, you know, hear what people have to say and decide on your own on that. I will come back to number two, which which again has been at the crux of it to begin with and. You know, if this were the only issue in question. I might say take a conservative approach and and not deal with it. But it's not. There will be other issues. There's going to be an appeal no matter what. And I also have to point out, I believe. Yes, the town's calculations is that one twenty six would be allowed under that formula. But that's based also on the town's calculation of what the gross floor area is, which the objectors do not agree to. They have, they believe that it's a different number of gross floor area. So that's, so it's not saying, oh, sure, you could do one twenty six. And never have to deal with this issue. You're still going to have to deal with this issue anyway. So I would suggest going forward with it. I believe it was properly. Part of the the intent and and the inherent discussion of the planning board and their recommendation. And I think you should go forward with it all tonight. And if it gets appealed, a court will sort it all out.
Colleagues, do you have any objection to moving forward? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your time and I and I apologize for taking so much of it. And I apologize to the the rest of the people who are waiting so patiently. Thanks again.
Thank you. Quick refresher, public hearing. Two minutes, except the petitioner. That petitioner was up a moment ago and I'm gonna ask you to come back up again. So I am opening the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? And I'll remind everyone, if you could please state your name and address for the record when it's your turn. Welcome. And I didn't say that to Mr. McGilvery. Welcome also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is John McCoy. I'm attorney for the applicant Brady Solon Properties. My address is forty Westminster Street in Providence. I'm here in favor of the application, so you can put that on that side of ledger. I appreciate Mr. Tights's summary before, although lengthy, I thought he hit all the points and he actually should shorten my introduction here quite a bit because I. I I think he summarized everything quite well where you stand tonight. This is a unique district. This is a unique building. This was before this council, and I think Councilor Pirella was the only one on at that time in two thousand eight, if I read it correctly. But this was back. Sorry, Councilor Pirella. So so was I, younger. But it's back before the board now. Mr. Carrion is here, Mr. Stolzmann, his attorney is here, who also I believe was there at the time before. This council on a previous proposed project when this zone was changed. And Mr. Stolzmann's gonna speak briefly later about the condition of property, what's happened since then, but. This unique zone was created for this property and the comprehensive plan is consistent with it. And what it says is. The zone change was intended to encourage rehabilitation and reuse of underused historic structures to be mixed use residential. And that's really why we're back here again. Brady Stone Properties is back here again for a mixed use residential pro- proposal. What they're proposing and why we're mostly before this board is to change the mix. Increase that density of ninety eight that was agreed to by the council back in two thousand eight. And decrease the commercial from the twenty two thousand to sixty three hundred. And I've got Mr. Reynolds and from Free Some Properties and Sean Martin from Fuss and O'Neil, the engineer. And they're gonna talk a little bit about things have changed in the market, among other things. There's more of a demand for residential. There's less of the demand for commercial for this property. So really change the mix. And that speaks sort of the density also. This could be more residential, but less commercial. And he'll talk to that. My co-counsel, I should mention also my co-counsel, John Rego, who I think you all know is not here tonight. He had a fall on Sunday. I spoke to him today. He is recovering, but regrets not being here tonight as well. So that's really what we're looking to do is to modify the mix. We had lengthy meetings before the planning board. There was a lot of back and forth. This start, as you probably know, is one hundred and fifty one residential units. What was agreed to was one hundred and twenty seven. There were other compromises agreed to with increase in the buffer, the parking lot across the street. One of the other things the planning board was very. Concerned about and made their request known was. The parking lot across the street for the Bristol Ferry. That was agreed to as a donation to the town to also get to the public ten percent use. So that's part of this proposal as well. But just very briefly, I would agree with Mr. Tice, and I think this has always been our position, that it's really the infrastructure. The what does the infrastructure support what's being proposed? Not so much the gross floor areas, as Mr. Dice said, it's the infrastructure. It's a unique building for that. And Mr. Martin's going to speak towards that, but that's really what section two eighty four. The first part of it speaks towards infrastructure on smaller, smaller buildings. So we're gonna talk about that as well. The commercial space, we did raise solvent, as you probably know, and I know many of you have been in it, did the tourist are building up the street in Warren. That property. We had to go back to zoning board twice Warren to increase the residential and decrease the commercial because just that's where the demand is. The commercial space is being proposed here, probably similar to what's proposed in Warren, small professional offices, things like that to benefit the residents as well as the neighborhood area. The other items that have come up, the fee and Lou, that was sites is right. That was condition two of the two thousand eight zone. Specifically in there. And really, when we solve and got involved in this property and its pre-application, early applications. We looked at condition two, we saw fee and Lou as an option. We proceeded on that basis. That was our understanding. And that's how we proposed the project that feeling there was an option. Originally, it was ten percent. We agree with the planning board fifteen percent with a hybrid proposal that three of the units across the street would be affordable. We've also spoken, East Bay Community Development Corporation was mentioned before. We spoke with Diane Mederos there. Mr. Reynolds has spoken to us as well. That organization can leverage the fee and Lou, which would be six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That be given, they can leverage that with grants for future properties they come up. So that's kind of the way they make those things work. I think I've covered all the main points. I'm going to ask first Mr. Martin to come up as the engineer to talk a little bit about the infrastructure. And how the one hundred and twenty seven units compares to the ninety eight.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council. My name is Sean Martin. I'm a professional civil engineer with Fuss and O'Neil at three seventeen Iron Horse Way in Providence, Rhode Island. I'm going to read for you. Some excerpts from. EPA's Smart Growth website. Integrated transportation and land use planning gives people more choices for getting around town and their region. When homes, offices, stores and civic buildings are near transit stations and close to each other. Is convenient to walk, bicycle or take transit. This expanded transportation choice makes it easier to incorporate physical activity into daily routines. Reduces transportation costs and gives more freedom and mobility to low income individuals. Senior citizens, disabled persons and others who cannot or choose not to drive or own a car. Providing a range of transportation choices in the walkable neighborhoods that support them help can help improve air quality. And reduce greenhouse gas emissions. A key finding of the Department of Energy study in two thousand and thirteen. Higher densities, a mix of uses and walkable neighborhoods contribute to lower vehicle travel and energy use. One of the initial statements and testimonies that I provided to both the planning board and the technical review committee. Was that higher density at this location. An area where within a five minute walk, you can access municipal services, businesses, recreational facilities. All from this particular property in less than a quarter of a mile radius. That is one of the huge assets and the attractions to this particular property. And in its underutilized state, it provides housing that is in demand. But it provides in an area where the existing infrastructure can serve it. There are roads, sidewalks, utilities. Now, we had done a traffic study in two thousand and seven, stated October two thousand and seven. And the conclusions at the time were that this project at ninety eight units at the time. Would have no significant impacts on the transportation infrastructure in this neighborhood. One key finding, one key bit of information I think you should be aware of is that that study was the scope of it. Was established by the planning board's civil engineering consultant and it was peer reviewed by that consultant. The planning board and its decision is also requiring an update to that study. There has been population growth, so it's going to look at what has happened to the transportation network in the vicinity of this location. Since that two thousand and ten decision. That project is underway. But I am saying at this point, none of the conditions at the time have changed. In the respect that this project will provide a mixed use development in an existing historic structure. It will reuse that structure. So sequestered carbon as it's a sustainable way to 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 provide this much needed housing. And then, as I said before, it provides access to lots of the goods and services and and things that people need in everyday life. Including the bike path, including public transit and Ripta. During the technical review committee, both the the Bristol sewer. Department and Bristol County Water Authority felt that there was adequate. Capacity in the existing infrastructure that. Final vetting and review by those departments will be conducted at the preliminary plan stage as Mr. Tites had referred to earlier. In addition. The project will design, will include a design for stormwater management system to. Remove some of the stormwater runoff that actually goes from the building and into the sewer. It will also remove some of the stormwater runoff from these properties that goes into the into the town streets, particularly Fame Street and into Bristol Harbor. Those modifications and improvements, in fact, will be conducted in accordance with both the CRM sees regulations and. Around Department of Environmental Management Regulations. The property does not have canopy trees present at this time. The project is going to comply with the town's landscaping ordinances. So the the post development. Improvements will include much needed tree canopy in this area. Many of you who may be familiar with the site can see trees around the perimeter. There are no significant trees within the the property confines. So this project will enhance what is there today in spite of the fact that there will be improved to provide parking. In a manner that was approved by the planning board. So all the analyses and reviews, both by the public utilities departments. And the planning board's consulting engineer will be conducted at the preliminary plan stage. I would like to point out the fact that the master plan did include a relief request to. The density as provided per for the residential units by building area. That was included in the application. And that's all I have, just in case the council wants to ask any specific questions about my statements.
Thank you. Just one other, Mr. Chairman, before I get up. Since we have Mr. Martin up here, there is also a request for relief from you. For the parking space sizes. So maybe Mr. Martin could briefly speak to the towards that since it is before you.
So maybe Mr. Martin could briefly speak towards that since it is before you.
Yes. In the 2010 decision, the council had asked at that time to provide parking excessive, the minimum required, which in this case is one space per dwelling unit. And then there's some additional parking spaces required for the commercial spaces. One space per 600 square feet of, of commercial area. The development provides in excess of the minimum required. It actually provides 299 spaces and 141 are required. As I had testified and I will say again, smart growth principles allow for smaller parking spaces, smaller driveway aisles that can still accommodate safely transportation or vehicle movements within parking lots. The proposed relief that was requested was to reduce the parking space width from 10 feet to nine feet. And I believe that planning board's decision at the time approved that relief, yet required the retention of the parking standard for striping, which we agreed to. The parking lot also provides some tandem parking spaces, which are not specifically prohibited. But again, this was a goal to provide enough parking to fulfill the market demands of this project. And we hope that we don't need it and that people will walk and bike as we anticipate. But this was also, I think, one of the concerns of the council is that this development not take on-street parking away from residents and other business users and folks that are just visiting other businesses, even on Hope Street. So, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Martin?
Thank you.
Thank you. So next, I was just going to have Mr. Reynolds and Brady Sullivan come up and talk a little bit about his experience, Brady Sullivan, their other mill projects and some of the commercial residential mix.
Hi, my name is Chris Reynolds, Senior Project Manager at Brady Sullivan Properties, 670 North Commercial Street in Manchester, New Hampshire. Just wanted to briefly talk about Brady Sullivan's experience developing mills. Done a lot of mills through the years of the company in Massachusetts, Vermont, New Hampshire. If you go up to Manchester, New Hampshire, you'll see many Brady Sullivan properties. But I want to specifically talk about Rhode Island. As a lifelong resident of Rhode Island and contractor, it's a little unique building in Rhode Island and, and constructing here. We at Brady Sullivan have been doing about 14 years in Rhode Island, primarily with the mills. They include Picasso Mill in Johnston, Anthony Mill and Harris Mill in Coventry, Slater Cotton Mill, American Insulator Wire in Batucket. In Providence is Butcher Block, US Rubber, Eagle Loft, Grant Mill. And lastly, American Toraster in Warren, which I think obviously many of you are familiar with. When we did American Toraster, I think many saw the changes that we did between the windows being damaged. The roof was leaking when we got in there. The brick restoration work and the salt water was, was unbelievable for that building. And I think you could really see the transformation of that building and what we've done. And it's such a different feel just when you drive over that bridge in today's world. I know many of you were able to take the tour with me to go through there. You know, it's tough to look at renderings and plans and try to really get an idea of what's gonna, what's, what's it gonna be at the end? And luckily with Toraster, it's a really great role model of what we plan at Robin Rug. And mills are a challenge. They're unique, they're different. You know, if you're doing new construction, everything's efficient, square footage, you measure, you, you analyze everything. Everything is so expensive, especially in today's world, and you build an efficient building. When you convert a mill, a mill was meant to build for yarn and it was built that way. So now you have a very inefficient building. You try to repurpose and reuse that building with historical guidelines to convert it to a vibrant apartment complex. We've definitely gotten better through the years of doing it, but we have a tried and true formula. All of those towns have very minor complaints with us and are big supporters. And, and, and I think that shows something of, of mills and, and the challenge of this project. One of the things with that challenge is commercial spaces. And, and we've had other projects that have required commercial spaces for either the size of the building or the constraints. And, and one of the challenges of a typical mill is parking. They built the mill, everybody walked to work. There wasn't really need for large parking lots. So parking is always our biggest challenge. And if you have some commercial space, typically you can kind of use the shared parking commercials during the day, residents at night. Three examples, you know, unfortunately, in today's world where everybody wants to buy everything through Amazon and quick and easy, commercials just getting tougher and tougher and tougher. And, and we're converting a lot of our commercial spaces to residential on many of our properties. You know, in a mill setting, it's tough to meet today's commercial guidelines. You're not going to get a storefront. You're not going to get easy parking right to the place. You're not going to have a big neon sign, historical will never allow anything like that. So you create some unique office spaces, which are good for some things. We have some architects, some wealth management services who kind of like the quirky, unique mill setting. So there is some use for commercial, but it is tough to find commercial tenants for a couple of different reasons. And also, you know, you want to make a commercial tenant that fits in with a, with a complex like ours. So you're not looking for a loud restaurant. You know, you're looking for something that's, you know, that coincides with the apartments because that is our most important feature of it. Three of the projects I would just quickly mention is Clinton, Mass., American Insulator Wire, and even Warren, American Toraster in Warren. All of them had large commercial spaces. And after many, many years of trying to do commercial, commercial square footage, and we do a lot of commercial square footage, we just weren't able to rent it out. And we converted all three of those, went back to those towns and asked for more residential units. And we granted, were granted more units on all three, which I think says something. Obviously, if they weren't happy with the project and people living there and complaints and other things, we would not have gotten additional units approved. So that's just quickly about, a little bit about Brady's experience. Just because everybody else mentioned square footage, I just want a quick, a quick 30 seconds on it. I think a little bit of the confusion that exists is the, the current owner in 2005 did a very exhaustive study with RGB, a local architect, and they measured every inch of the building. And I've got a set of plans here if anybody wants to see. And again, the challenges of this building and the people that walked it noticed every three steps, it's a different level and it's a very difficult building to get your arms around it. When they did that study, and I'm talking every inch of the, of the site, they came out with 316,000 square feet. And the problem that creates confusion is the property field cut from the tax assessor, which was referenced by Diane, was 381,000 square feet, which just created this confusion that you're hearing a little bit about. And, and when you see our plans, we quote what we're going to actually use and develop. And our plans, some of the basements are being filled in. So that square footage goes. There's some infill floors on the bottom level that was created. We're removing that to get it all to one level. The only thing we're demolishing is the block building in back. So that's why this square footage, which we've already heard a lot about, just wanted to give you a little bit of context, which was, I think, a little bit of the confusion on it. I think that's all I have.
Council have any specific questions for Mr. Reynolds?
I just, I just wanted to make one comment about that, about the commercial. And I actually, I'm, I'm happy to see the, the request for the reduction of commercial at this point in the process, rather than have what happened in Warren and other places where density is already an issue. And all of a sudden, now you can't, you use up the commercial and all of a sudden there's another 10 units or whatever the units are. So I mean, I'm very happy that this request to limit that size is before us at this point. I don't want to come back and, or, you know, and see in a couple of years, hey, there's no use for the commercial space. Let's, you know, we can put in another five, 10 units in that space. And so I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was also going to have Mrs. Stolzmann come up briefly and talk about the use of the building since this was here before. And then what I thought we would do, I wanted to make too long on our presentation, but we can take any specific questions from the councils here from the public and be glad to take any questions after that on specific subjects.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Rob Stolzmann. I'm an attorney at Adler Pollock and Sheehan, and I represent Mr. Carrion. I've been working on this project since 1985 when I was a law student. I was an intern at Adler Pollock and that's when the block building, the last dye house was permitted. And as a summer intern, I worked on that application. Mr. Carrion was working for his father down in the basement. So we've been attorneys and client. He's the second, and there's actually a third generation involved with the building. And I'm the third generation lawyer working on this site. I've become like an easement. I run with the land at Robin Rug. And, and I, I don't want to take a lot of time, but Councilwoman Perella may remember, Mr. Hershoff was on the council at the time we approved this, and he went missing for the last hearing. They couldn't find him. Diane Williamson got on the phone, Diane Medeors got on the phone. They said, we think he may be at the museum up in the loft. So I said, you guys keep calling. I jumped in my car and ran over to the museum. And sure enough, I had to climb a ladder up to the third floor. He was in the loft. He was inventing some type of floating dock that would fold up when a storm was coming. So I said, well, we've got to get to the council. He said, what for? I said, the Robin Rug thing. He goes, is that tonight? So we came down and they said, oh, wait, I got to move a boat first. So we went out in the harbor. I'm in a suit. I take my shoes off. I jump on the boat. I got back here, I said to Russell, I said, this is crazy. I said, but we finally got this thing approved. I'm sorry for the sidebar, but, but we, we have a lot of history with this.
We have a lot of stories about Halsey, so.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So, but let, let me, we're talking about what's good for the town. I had instructions 12 years, 14 years ago now, and actually goes back 15 and 16 when we started planning for this for Mr. Carrion. After meetings with Diane and Andy, Diane Medeors, we all, and, and the council, we had five core principles. Mr. Texera, you mentioned this earlier in the other matter on, on the sidewalks. Let's cut through all the theory and the BS. What's the real world here? There were five core principles that Bristol wanted from Robin Rug. And somehow they've gotten lost in this discussion of all these legalese and stuff. Five core principles. One, preserve the history of the buildings. Let's not forget about that. This is the largest oceanfront manufacturing facility north of Baltimore in the United States on the East Coast. Ted Sanderson, when he was the State Historic Preservation Officer, loved this site. He loved the towers, et cetera. Mr. Hershoff loved it from the water. The whole town should benefit from preserving the historic buildings. And that's not going to happen on its own. Somebody's got to repurpose the buildings to preserve them. They're starting to fall apart. The brick and mortar is starting to go. Mr. Carrion's keeping it together with his own two hands, going up in the lifts and re-mortaring the place. It needs a substantial repurposing. So principle number one, core principle number one, preserve the buildings. Core principle number two, Diane and I have been fighting over these for 25 years. Public access to the water. Public access to the water. It's a condition, nobody's talking about that, but unless we repurpose this, that boardwalk's not going to get extended. It's a condition to this project, and it's in our 2008 approval. It's in this project. It was a nonstarter to talk about it. You got to extend the public access to the water so that the boardwalk will run all the way from the north at Pilgrim Mills all the way to the Elks. So you get that with this project. Number three, core principle number three, assist the town in expanding the town marina. We don't talk about that. That didn't happen by accident. What happened in our 2008 discussions? Mr. Carrion agreed that we would, he would donate at no cost his litoral rights to the waterfront in front of his property. And then, when the economy crashed, as part of, during those discussions, he said, I'll do it today because you may have municipal funds to go forward. And what do you have there today? An expanded marina as part of this project. Don't forget that. That's already, that's a down payment on this project. Core principle number four, the town wants residential there. This place begs for a residential development. We chose 98 arbitrarily because the condo market at the time allowed for a substantial mix of three-bedroom luxury units on the top floors. That market's dried up. That market's changed. But high-density residential was always part of the core principles. And core principle number five, and this was new in the, in the public thinking at the time. And now, lo and behold, now we're acting like it's not good enough. And that was to provide a core fund for the, these new things called the Bristol Community Housing Development Corporation and, and the, the two agencies mentioned before. So we put into the ordinance before it was required, a payment in lieu mechanism for affordable housing. So those were the five core principles that were not to be violated. And we've stuck with those. Mr. Carrion has showed this property. I've been involved with dozens and dozens. Diane has talked about it, Diane Williams, Ms. Williamson, I'm sorry, your, your community development director. How many tire kickers, different people going through? To, to maintain these five core principles requires a specialty developer. Now, I'm, I'm not saying Brady Sullivan's the only one, but they're the only one who, and we've been talking to them for seven years through different economic cycles. Finally, the time seemed right, right before COVID, and we said, we think we could do it. Now COVID's hit, it's taken a little bit more time, but here we are. Now, what do you have today with this project? And this is, it drives me crazy that people aren't talking about this. We preserve all five of the core principles. One, the building gets preserved and restored without any demolition. We've had people talk about cutting down parts of buildings, et cetera. Full restoration. Two, the boardwalk. Three, the marina, which is now a fait accompli. Four, the residential reuse. Five, almost $700,000 for affordable housing. And six, this is a new one, a public parking lot. Oh, lo and behold, this project, through the extensive negotiation efforts of Diane, Andy and your planning board, we had to throw in the Church Street parking lot, which the town's been renting. Now the town gets that for free. So you've got a sixth benefit that wasn't, we'll call that a core principle now because it came a core principle to the planning. So through everything you hear in favor or against, don't lose track of what Bristol wanted from this property, the five core principles plus the parking lot. And none of those are going away. They're all part of this application. You can nibble around the edges and get upset. People can say, we're quibble with this or quibble with that, but that's the project. It hasn't changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Obviously, he speaks in the heart since he's been doing this since 1985.
You couldn't tell. You couldn't tell at all. It didn't come through, Rob. Work on that.
One other side comment, I looked at my notes and I don't think I mentioned before, this has come up at the planning board level. It's come up and I think some comments I saw about the fiscal impact. There was a revised fiscal impact report that was submitted by Ed Pimentel, who I think many of this board may know, revised, excuse me, by Joe Lombardo, March 22. And what, and that was presented to the planning board in the last public hearing. What that says is that basically this project, just at the assessment of this, is a wash. If you add in the expected sewer collections that will be generated, it's basically a wash. I know there's some concern at the planning board that was expressed about the fiscal impact of this project. But even beyond that, you've got a property, certainly has been underutilized, as Mr. Stolzmann reiterated again. Now you're going to get a property that's going to be fully assessed with 127 residential apartments in there and for 6,300 square feet of commercial space, which will be fully assessed, a benefit to the town of Bristol, an infill development, smart growth right there with people who will be walking in. Another thing that wasn't mentioned, there will be an accessway that was agreed to by Brady Sullivan, cutting through the parking lot to Hope Street. So a lot of these people have easy access to the businesses of Hope Street. They're consumers of those businesses. Dining, that's allowed on the sidewalk or not, but going to those businesses. So you've got a whole new bunch of clientele contributing to Warren with extra housing. So just wanted to throw that into, I recognize I didn't put that in before, so I wanted to throw that as well. We're available for questions, but I know you have a lot of members of the public here too, so I want to give them an opportunity as well.
Thank you. I want to thank the public again for your respects for all that we're speaking. I'm, I know that that will continue. So is there anyone else to speak in favor? Please. Be with me as I turn my timer on.
Thank you. I'll do my best, Nathan.
I know. I don't want to do it either, but.
No, no, you have to. We'll never get out of here.
Please state your name and address for the record and then I'll start.
I'm Elaine White, a resident of 11 Constitution. I'm Elaine White, a resident of 11 Constitution Street. And we have, on our street, Lower Constitution, a generational neighborhood of people. And it's a quiet corner of Bristol. So I am not going to speak for them because they are very passionate about why they might not be in favor of what's about to happen if this gets approved to our corner of the world. So I'm going to speak as a business owner because I don't think we hear enough from the business owners. I've been a business owner in Bristol, downtown Bristol, for 25 years. And I believe that our town does not have a clear vision of the aging population and the seasonal population, what we plan on doing to stop aging out. And I think that an apartment complex of this magnitude will be of great service to the businesses in town. Now, it is not going to be fun living down there. The traffic will be a drag. It will absolutely create a lot of energy down there that we're not used to. But from purely a business standpoint, I think when we, no offense to the people around here, me with the white hair, I don't think there are many people here that are under the age of 40, maybe Chris over there in the corner. And I think we need to focus on what our plan is to attract more young people to our community. I think an apartment building of this size will attract younger work-at-home people. And I think the point of walking and utilizing the services is of great value. I don't think that it is only going to be that. I know we're going to have a lot of traffic, which will be a whole other topic later on. Thank you. So I think we just have to keep thinking about the businesses and the aging-out population, and what is our plan for that? And that is the point that I'd like to make. So I am in support of this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. If you are here to speak in favor, please just line up in front of the mic, and we'll.
Hi, Gina McDonald, 180 Ferry Road. And I wrote each of you a letter that enumerated my reasons for speaking in favor of this. But as I look at the people who are opposed to it, had they been here 10, 15, however many years ago Stone Harbor was approved, they would have spoken in opposition to that. And I think as we look at that project today, it's a credit to Bristol. And we have many new residents that we wouldn't have had otherwise. So I urge you to approve this. Thank you.
You can take a page from Gina's book. That was outstanding. Thank you. In scope. So is there anyone else to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman, hi. I'm DeWolfe Fulton, and I'm a Bristol resident, 28 Monkey Wrench Lane. I've watched this building from both the land and the water for decades. And I'm hoping something can happen to upgrade it, what many call an eyesore, but now it's a rare and very special eyesore. I've watched it languish since the Sasaki Plan. Does anyone remember that? Wasn't that in the 80s? It was, and we all were hopeful at that point that something would happen. And then, again, another condo proposal was in the late 1980s, I think, before the market fell out. So we've had a few false starts here where it's been a disappointment. People want to live by the water, and there's only so much waterfront property in Bristol. Here's a prime opportunity to fulfill that dream for a significant number of people. And as the town solicitor notes, it's the last building of its type here in town. I understand this proposal will not bring in any significant burden in schooling costs and that many residents will be empty nesters, as well as the young folks that were just mentioned here. New residents bring not only purchasing power to town, but they often bring a sense of civic duty and join in to help out the many public, private, and nonprofit groups we have. That's an impact that's hard to measure, but one that should not be overlooked. While I sympathize with any density and parking issues, this still can be overcome. I suggest we take the cue from Stone Harbor and Tourister Mills, improve the looks of the building, add public access along the waterfront, and increase the tax revenue it would bring to town. Rhode Island lost the Paw Sox to Worcester because of the special interests of a few people. But let's seize this opportunity and not lose this building as a proud addition. And I encourage the council to adopt this and make it happen one way or another.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Yeah? Is there anyone else to speak? Archie's important, but he won't be speaking tonight, so.
Gary Holmstrom, 341 Hope Street, Bristol. I am in a butter. I strongly urge the council to delay the vote on this project until the results of the new density study and fiscal impact reports are complete. I do not object to the development of this valuable property. I just think we ought to do it right. We ought to do it by the law and by the rules. The developer referenced a 2008 traffic study. And I think we talked about this before, that that was done in a snowstorm in February, maybe. I don't think that's a valid study. It really should be looking at public safety and a new study. And I think they talked about a new study, traffic study. I could be wrong, but I think that's what they said. Fiscal impact report is prudent. I know that they talked about the amount of money that would be lost revenue to the town. I don't think that was clear. I saw several numbers. It seems to me that, like the council did earlier in a meeting here, look at the total picture and make wise decisions, not hasty ones. And I think it's proper for the developer to seek variances through the zoning board to meet the required standards by claims of hardship and not to change well-established zoning code. And I ask that this be a matter of record. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is still four?
This is still four. So she beat me to it. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against?
Good evening. My name's Jane Lavender, 50 Thane Street, Bristol. We bought our house several years ago from our daughter and her husband. We were down here visiting and fell in love with Bristol. She said she was putting her house on the market. We walked down the street to Leo's to have a drink, sat in the window. My husband and I can tell you what table we sat at, went back to her house and said, "We're buying your house." We just fell in love with the town, just like they did. And so, and Russell, you've been a good neighbor to us. He came over and introduced himself to us, brought me some red, white, and blue braided rugs. I had many a visit with his mom in the office, and I look forward to the building being developed. I'm cautious about several pieces of it. And I find it hard to limit myself to two minutes, Nate. It takes me that long just to put my glasses on, so bear with me. But this project is going to impact our lives forever in that neighborhood. There's no question. And, but we obviously knew when we bought a property that it would be developed. I think that my biggest concern, unfortunately, is the developer, his history. I, you know, I've done a lot of research on it. And I know, Mr. Reynolds, you mentioned a lot of these nice buildings, but the amount of fines that your company has had to pay, the EPA fines are overwhelming. $90,000 on one building and so many thousand on another, asbestos out, air quality, lead issues. It's just horrific. And I think if you Google a little history of Brady Sullivan properties, you're going to see that pretty much every single one of them that he was mentioning tonight, American Wire, $20,000 paid violations, Lead Paint Mill, Weston Manchester, violations, the loft at Anthony Mill, Harris Mill Loft, lots of.
That's two minutes.
So these were all on record. So I think that that is our biggest concern, is who is going to be overseeing so we don't have this kind of damage to our community? Because we want it to look nice. It will look nice. We want it to be safe.
We're at two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's difficult. So I've been asked, we're going to take a three-minute break for, we'll call it a bio break. All right, we'll be back in three. Thanks. Okay, everyone, we're going to resume the meeting. Thank you for your patience, and I'll say it again. Thank you for your respect to all that have been speaking to. So is there anyone else to speak against?
Michael Rossi, 190 Hope Street. I have three points. I'll make them quick. In 2008, I was on the planning board. We considered a number of conditions for this development. We decided on 98 units to be a proper density. But we had not, although we did consider environmental issues, we had not considered what has happened in the last 12 years. In the last 12 years, the consensus amongst climatologists and also environmental scientists is that maritime areas are at risk, environmental risk. Creating high-density properties on maritime institutions is really creating a public hazard. Second, the town has contributed a great deal to our marina. And we've had even an effort to restore our armory for the function of being a marine center. However, the funds that we used to restore that obviated the use of the property as a marine center. We are now given an opportunity for a property that's adjacent to the marina, which could offer 22,000 square feet for marine services. I would consider, instead of squandering the opportunity, the town council consider that. Finally, affordable housing. It's been increasingly, okay, it's been increasingly important to me that our town diversity depends on having an opportunity for our young people, our children of Bristol, and our police force and other services. I hope that you consider affordable housing in your decisions. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak against?
I'm Julie Anthony from 17 Fishhawk Lane here in Bristol. And I appreciate the council's opportunity for us to speak at the meeting. I'm not on the face of it against developing the property. I think that something needs to be done. Personally, I'd love to see no building there at all. I think that'd be much better for the town, but nonetheless, that ship sailed long ago. I think that I'm just, I'm, I'm just really disappointed in, in where we've gotten to. And I feel really passionately about this. I want families to live here. I want older people that are retiring to stay here. I want people that are middle aged to be together. A good community has all ages and all kinds of people in it. And I think that this development isn't really looking for that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak against? You don't have to wait for me to call. If you are, you can feel free to come up.
Hi, my name is Margot Jones, 256 Hope Street. We're new residents of Bristol and we came here because of the wonderful historic fabric that you have and that you've made a big commitment to preserve. I mean, it's one of the original historic districts and, you know, as a retired architect, I really am happy to be a part of it. So I was very excited when this development was coming up to be done. And I too, I, I'm in favor of it being developed. I think it'll bring new life to downtown and fill up those commercial spaces that are empty now. Vitality and everything, but there are weaknesses to the proposal that I hope you will address. One is the joke of affordable housing by putting all the units in a ghetto across the street, three units in the, you know, the wood framed housing. I, I think that'll be easily put down in court. And then just paying a small amount of money for the other units, the 17 others. I mean, the affordable housing should be part of the mix. It should be on every floor. It should be, you shouldn't even know who's got the affordable housing and who doesn't. So that would be a proper development at this point. I also think by reducing commercial, you're going to be reducing the amount of access the public has to that beautiful waterfront. And why not have a couple of restaurants? Why not have a loud bar? I mean, we want activity. We want to be able to see, we want to just, not just have the walkway along the water, that'll be great, but, but really have a more vital development that'll use this big, huge building that's really important historically. And I, I think that's all. I mean, the other thing is that by having a high density, they are, well, when they reduce the density, they've had more three bedroom units and most of the bedrooms, 70% of the bedrooms don't have windows, outside windows. I'm, you know, I'm an architect. I don't know how that can be to code. But apparently it is legal. And what it happens is that people, people use it for studies and not kids. And we want families.
Thank you.
My apologies. I'm sorry. Can you state your name one more time? I'm, I didn't, I was writing and I didn't get it.
Margot Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak against? Please.
Yeah, my name is Anthony Angelo McLean. I reside at 66 Ferry Road here in Bristol. I'm actually not speaking against or for, but I didn't know if he was going to get to the folks in the middle. So I took the opportunity to come up. But you'd mentioned five core principles and you expanded that to six. I would suggest it be a seventh core principle in that inclusiveness. And when I, my definition of that is, in terms of subcontractors and vendors, that there be action by the council to assure that there's some percentage of those vendors and subcontractors who are people of color, either minority owned businesses, women owned businesses. And then for the work crews, that there be a percentage of the work crew that are people of color. Because we talk about having a diverse community. Part of that starts with, when there's opportunities for revenue, salaries, that that gets spread evenly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak against?
Hi, my name is Dr. Catherine Ziff. That's Z as in zebra. I, P as in Peter, F as in Frank, and I live at 32 Greylock Road. And I thought I would start my own timer so I could see. I'm going to be one of the few voices to say that I actually think we should not proceed with this development. I am very concerned about how woefully obsolete and out of date the compliance is for this. The last time the Rhode Island Heritage Historical Preservation and Heritage Commission looked at this, as I understand it, was at least 2007. I assure you that there has been sea change, not one, but two new executive directors. They're in the process of hiring a third who might take a different opinion on this. And I would urge the committee to look again at some of these 15 years ago compliance. I don't think the R I H B H C would make the same decision they would today. And the reason I think that, in one minutes and 15 seconds, is that there has been a sea change in historic preservation, which as you all know is my field, on the issue of climate change. This building is at ground zero of climate change in Bristol. I will, I am hard pressed to find a way to save it short of 15 foot walls around it. And it's going to be, you know, very, very difficult and very, very expensive. And by climate change, I am not talking about the inconvenience of flood reports, which is what they have in Charleston. You get your weather report, you get your flood report, which roads are flooded today. I am talking about Fame Street being underwater all the time. Right? This is a building that in a mere 30 years will be unlivable. So I don't think we should develop it now. And the reason I think that is because the issue of this building being in the two foot sea level rise is on all of our maps, right? We know this in Bristol. This, this building is very much at risk for climate change. We know this and we are allowing a developer to develop this anyway. If I were somebody living in that building and a hurricane came through, you don't think I would sue us? Please, if you move forward with this, make sure everybody associated with this building signs something that says they will not sue. Thank you. See, right there.
Magical. Is there anyone else to speak against? We'll accept in the middle too, so yes. I know, we make you choose. It's just the way that we do it, but if the middle road is okay, please.
Pete Hewitt of Bristol. I had no intention of speaking.
Could you state your address too, please?
11 Wendy Drive.
Thank you.
I had sent you, gentlemen and lady, an email expressing my concerns about how you would, would proceed tonight. But a couple of points. One, I'm not, climate is changing all the time. I'm not a, I'm not a fan of the scare tactics of we're going to be underwater in Bristol. The isthmus of Bristol, the peninsula is going to be underwater in 30 years. That's BS. Number one. Number two, I would like somebody to explain to me, the advocates of affordable housing, how does one define affordable housing? And whose responsibility is it to determine how many units of a building should be affordable and where they should be? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Ramos, 289 Hope Street. My issues with the parking. Now, I walk that neighborhood frequently. And I've noticed that the parking lot on the east side of that building is at times totally full. I've noticed the whole length of Fame Street on the side, west side of abutting the, the project is totally full. Where is the excess parking going to come for the Yelts? Where are all the people from Prudence Island going to park? This is your issue, not their issue. Because this is, right now, they have a place to park. The people at the Yelts have a place to park. The people from Prudence Island have a place to park. And this is, make no mistake, this is not Stone Harbor. Stone Harbor is condos. They have a small, very small percentage of people that actually live there that are residents. This project, a majority of people who are dead right there are going to be residents. Once they're residents, you're going to have a problem with, each resident can get two parking spots, off-street parking, besides their two, one or two whatever pots of parking they have there. This is going to be a quagmire of, of parking problem, which we have already. I know there was a study done years ago that said there was, it wasn't a problem. There's no problem downtown parking. If you want to park outside your house, you might have to park a block or two blocks away. What's going to happen now is the residents that live there, there are going to be no parking for them. These people that are, these people that are residents of this, okay?
No, you can, you can have a ten.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak against? Is there anyone else to speak against?
My name is John McCloskey, 249 Hope Street. I am in a butter. And I am opposed to the increased density. And I'm, I'm opposed to the formulas for affordable housing. I am not opposed to the project. I've been to many, many of these meetings, both on Zoom and in person. And I have to say that I haven't been to a single meeting where anyone has been adamantly opposed to the project. I think Bristol is really, really behind this and really wants to see it done the right way. So that's my petition to, to you as a town council. Thank you. Thank you for laying out the meeting the way you did. It was really good to have the, the preface by the, the council. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak against?
Hi, my name is Dr. Catherine Ziff. That's Z as in zebra. I, P as in Peter, F as in Frank, and I live at 32 Greylock Road. And I thought I would start my own timer so I could see. I'm going to be one of the few voices to say that I actually think we should not proceed with this development. I am very concerned about how woefully obsolete and out of date the compliance is for this. The last time the Rhode Island Heritage Historical Preservation and Heritage Commission looked at this, as I understand it, was at least 2007. I assure you that there has been sea change, not one, but two new executive directors. They're in the process of hiring a third who might take a different opinion on this. And I would urge the committee to look again at some of these 15 years ago compliance. I don't think the R I H B H C would make the same decision they would today. And the reason I think that, in one minutes and 15 seconds, is that there has been a sea change in historic preservation, which as you all know is my field, on the issue of climate change. This building is at ground zero of climate change in Bristol. I will, I am hard pressed to find a way to save it short of 15 foot walls around it. And it's going to be, you know, very, very difficult and very, very expensive. And by climate change, I am not talking about the inconvenience of flood reports, which is what they have in Charleston. You get your weather report, you get your flood report, which roads are flooded today. I am talking about Fame Street being underwater all the time. Right? This is a building that in a mere 30 years will be unlivable. So I don't think we should develop it now. And the reason I think that is because the issue of this building being in the two foot sea level rise is on all of our maps, right? We know this in Bristol. This, this building is very much at risk for climate change. We know this and we are allowing a developer to develop this anyway. If I were somebody living in that building and a hurricane came through, you don't think I would sue us? Please, if you move forward with this, make sure everybody associated with this building signs something that says they will not sue. Thank you. See, right there.
Magical. Is there anyone else to speak against? We'll accept in the middle too, so yes. I know, we make you choose. It's just the way that we do it, but if the middle road is okay, please.
Pete Hewitt of Bristol. I had no intention of speaking.
Could you state your address too, please?
11 Wendy Drive.
Thank you.
I had sent you, gentlemen and lady, an email expressing my concerns about how you would, would proceed tonight. But a couple of points. One, I'm not, climate is changing all the time. I'm not a, I'm not a fan of the scare tactics of we're going to be underwater in Bristol. The isthmus of Bristol, the peninsula is going to be underwater in 30 years. That's BS. Number one. Number two, I would like somebody to explain to me, the advocates of affordable housing, how does one define affordable housing? And whose responsibility is it to determine how many units of a building should be affordable and where they should be? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Ramos, 289 Hope Street. My issues with the parking. Now, I walk that neighborhood frequently. And I've noticed that the parking lot on the east side of that building is at times totally full. I've noticed the whole length of Fame Street on the side, west side of abutting the, the project is totally full. Where is the excess parking going to come for the Yelts? Where are all the people from Prudence Island going to park? This is your issue, not their issue. Because this is, right now, they have a place to park. The people at the Yelts have a place to park. The people from Prudence Island have a place to park. And this is, make no mistake, this is not Stone Harbor. Stone Harbor is condos. They have a small, very small percentage of people that actually live there that are residents. This project, a majority of people who are dead right there are going to be residents. Once they're residents, you're going to have a problem with, each resident can get two parking spots, off-street parking, besides their two, one or two whatever pots of parking they have there. This is going to be a quagmire of, of parking problem, which we have already. I know there was a study done years ago that said there was, it wasn't a problem. There's no problem downtown parking. If you want to park outside your house, you might have to park a block or two blocks away. What's going to happen now is the residents that live there, there are going to be no parking for them. These people that are, these people that are residents of this, okay?
No, you can, you can have a ten.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak against?
My name is Bob Holt. I own 10 and 12 Constitution Street. My only concern is I, I, Russell's been a good neighbor, good person. He's helped everybody in the neighborhood. I'd like to see this thing go through. But I'm concerned I have a house with no driveway. I have a two family. And I'm worried about parking. And I know I can come, we have the two hour sticker, but I'm thinking of something the town can do, maybe to help them out with a residency sticker for Constitution Street or something that will help them out. The other thing is, I've been to every meeting. I hope the town gets a project manager that's neutral to represent all the people that have bought this property and all the promises they made, they stick to. That's the only thing I ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hate to say against, because I am a neighbor and I do want this property developed. And I appreciate the riparian rights and the things that.
Could you state your name and address?
Yes, Nancy Chase, 21 Constitution Street. I'm in a butter to the property. The upper east side of the parking lot abuts the rear of our property. I follow this project for over a year and I've said at many meetings and written that, explained to folks that for folks in this part of the neighborhood where it's like a U, a U, a horseshoe, all of our backyards about this parking lot. And it's the most peaceful and private part of our properties. So where we hang with all the noise in the front, with the bars closing at night and some things in the front of our properties that are very kind of, they're not really private. We really enjoy the quiet enjoyment of our properties in that rear yard. Whether it's being out in the yard with the kids, like from my kitchen table, I can see through the ivy variety into the parking lot. That parking lot hasn't been lit for 200 years. And the density, whether it's the density because you want more parking in there more than the developer needs to do, or whether it's more density because of the number of units, it's the intensity of use on that parking lot. It's not, it's 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's people starting their cars. It's car alarms. It's headlights that we can see from our back properties. And I know that there's a lot of like, deals and negotiations. Well, the parking lot was important to the town of Bristol, but the quiet enjoyment of our properties is really important to us. And we've invested and relied on these comprehensive plans, these zoning laws, these historic district protections. Rick and I bought in 2000 before.
It's not, it's twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. It's people starting their cars. It's car alarms. It's headlights that we can see from our back properties. And I know that there's a lot of like deals and negotiations. Well, the parking lot was important to the town of Bristol. But the quiet enjoyment of our properties is really important to us. And we've invested and relied on these comprehensive plans, these zoning laws, these historic district protections. Rick and I bought in two thousand before any of these developments and we relied on the stringency of these things and we've had to abide by them. And whatever you can do to like keep us whole and not have to live with the only part of our property. It's not have peace. You can round, you have tools to round this square peg. We don't have tools to undo our investment. So we'd appreciate if you could do your best to keep the density to ninety eight, to restrict the parking lot out of the W P U D zone to provide for twenty squits to twenty foot buffer and a deed restrict the property for just ground use and parking only for no future development. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak against?
Tom Bergenholtz, three sixty six Hope Street, and I am in a butter. And I'm not really against either. I agree with Nancy. I just, I just think we're at a situation here where we really need to be careful. The the Bristol, the comprehensive plan was brought up many, many times tonight, but I don't think a lot of people understand where it came from and how long it's going to be here. Um, it really was developed by a hundred and over a hundred and twenty Bristol citizens. We got together and did it and and it's it's going to be here till two, February first of twenty twenty seven. So it's here for a while. So we need to, we really need to follow the comprehensive plan. It is the land development plan for the town. And there are a couple of interesting quotes in the plan that that I found real interesting. The plan states, quote, "It is not enough to rely on elected and appointed government officials to assure the actions today will not impair the quality of life for future generations," end of quote. It goes on to state, quote, "But ultimately, the existence of a dedicated and passionate citizenry will ensure that the steward, the ensure that stewardship in the decades ahead," end of quote. So I I think that, you know, it's obvious to me that Brady Brady Sullivan has a clear pattern of conduct that does not live up to the standards set in the two quotes above from the Bristol Comprehensive Plan. The past track record on numerous projects similar to Robin Rug fails far short of stewardship stewardship and quality of life for future generations in Bristol. And I think you guys are at a real critical point here on which way you're going to go. I, if you're going to go to bed with somebody, I I think you really need to do a lot of work and understand what that company is all about and where we're going. Thanks, guys.
You're going to make me say it? Is there anyone else to speak against?
Don't mind the clipboard. I'm just anxious. I don't have a list. My name is Laurel Curtis. I live at two sixty five Hope Street in Bristol. I am speaking against. Yeah, I'm not a legalist person either. I'm I'm a concerned neighbor, concerned that there's a lot of information tonight, so I I humbly request you do not make the decision tonight. I'm concerned about the developer. I'm concerned about their history with environmental concerns. This is an old building. It's prep. Asbestos remediation, lead, air quality, there's the list goes on and on and on. Just be careful and and please do not make the decision tonight. I'm glad that attorney summarized everything. That's great, but can we have a summary of the summary, please? That would help me a lot. And by the way, our lovely neighborhood is only rated forty seven percent for livability. And that is based on, believe it or not, transportation, which floors me because the bus goes by. Inclusion. Density. And there's another one that was probably the most important, but forty seven percent of someplace that I can walk to a lot of places kind of floors me. When when I'm looking at a property, people are now looking at, they look at these rating systems. This one happens to be Rhode Island Realtors and the statistics are from A A R P, which is kind of funny because on one hand, people are saying bring in younger people. Someone else is saying it's going to bring in the empty nesters. So I did have a list when I started here. But now listening to these guys and listening to everyone else, I'm really confused. So please don't make that decision tonight. Two minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak against? Is there anyone else to speak against?
Evening. My name is Steve Mishana. I live at three eighty one High Street. Here in town, of course. Yes, I am speaking against this project. I don't like it at all. I think it can be developed more creatively. I don't think it's a very creative. As I said in my letter to the editor, I'm sure everyone here has read it. Couple of weeks ago in the Phoenix, when you have a hammer, everything looks like a nail. And that's the feeling I get here. If it were to go ahead, I think that I object to the increased density issue. So there's that. There are many other reasons, but it would take too long to state at this time. I just think it'll be a problem. Density wise, traffic, it's going to impact that entire area. I'd like to see most of the buildings gone, truthfully. I'd like not just a boardwalk, but be able to walk from Fame Street all the way to the water, just the way we do at Independence Park and that kind of a view. What else? Oh, one other thing. Stone Harbor has been mentioned. I was on the Historic District District Commission back then when Stone Harbor was proposed. And they were going to, you know, make the condos or whatever that building is, those things are these days in the premier thread building. Little by little, all that was left of the premier thread building, many of you might recall, is the facade that was held up by steel girders. Everything else was torn down. It just didn't work out. The levels weren't right, whatever, whatever. So and I would also re say not to make any kind of decision this evening till you get more facts. Thank you very much.
Anyone else to speak against? Is there anyone else to speak against? Is there anyone else to speak against? I'll take a count of five. All right.
Motion. Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Administrator, did I miss you in regards to the public here? Actually, was there something?
I would like to comment. You know, it was actually, it's this is the best time for me because I really wanted to hear what the public had to say. In this case, this comes from more of the administrator's perspective with management and so forth. It was good to hear some of the input and there's nothing more important than us to keep in keeping our residents happy. I don't always like change. I like old Bristol, but at the same time, I know that there's a time to think about the future. And this is what I want to add to the the thought tonight. We just had one additional company move to Bristol recently on Wood Street. They're planning on bringing in a hundred new good jobs. There's talk of another large business moving to Bristol, more high paying, good jobs. These are in the works. Our concern is we don't have housing. We have jobs. We have young people looking to move in, but we do not have housing for them. So I just ask that you consider that. I think it's a good project. It has some very good benefits for us. Finally, opening up the waterfront will be nice. That twenty three space parking lot would be deeded over to us. I know that was discussed. And another important point is I have been communicating with my counterpart over in Warren. I know the police chief spoke to the police chief there and ran some data and numbers on calls for service and so forth. And there haven't been any major issues in Warren. I've been driving through the the tourist mill. It's very quiet. There are a lot of units there in Warren and I think looking at Water Street in Warren, it was definitely a benefit. I don't, I didn't see or hear of any hazardous issues or negligence on behalf of the developer. If there were, I would tell you. And you can also speak to your counterparts on the council there, but there weren't any issues. If anything, it was a success story for the town of Warren. I think it's a good project. I think it's time to look at the future of Bristol, get the lights back on in that building and improve the downtown area in Dame Street. That's certainly my goal. It always has been. And I don't, I think it's hard to see that things are very quiet there and now, but it can't continue that way. The building is falling apart. And I think I think this company can get the project done and it will be an improvement. So those are, those are my thoughts. And again, I I I hope it works out and our town departments will work with the neighbors and I I like the comment about hopefully the developers will honor their words on keeping some of those improvements near the parking lot and so forth. And that's something I'm very, also very interested in. Working with the neighbors and making sure that they're reassured. But I think it's, again, I like to use the word future. We're going to start thinking of the future and I I think it's time to make a move on the building.
Thank you. Counsel, open it up to you.
Mr. Chairman, oh, go ahead.
It's going to be a little while. I got a few points I just wanted to go through. Is that, is that okay?
Absolutely.
So I I just had some some notes and some things I wanted to get on the record for tonight. And in response to some of the comments that I heard over here today, there's a lot I like about this project. I I love the, you know, the extension of the boardwalk and having more public access to the shoreline, reusing mill buildings to add more housing, as the town administrator said. We have businesses that are coming in and they're trying to place their workers in places that that are here in Bristol. I've also talked to other business owners who are here in Bristol in the marine trades in an areas like that. And they tell me that their workers are coming in from Pawtucket because they can't find affordable housing or any housing whatsoever here in Bristol. And so that was a concern to me. And then one of the other things I like about this project is turning this underutilized lot in into something that can be used again. I think that that's really important. I think what concerns me maybe the most about this project is something that hasn't necessarily been talked about by a whole lot of the folks here in the crowd. But like Michael and Margot and Jessalyn, one of my concerns is that I I didn't think that the planning board's findings sufficiently addressed the affordable housing component of the plan. So for those of you who don't know, state law mandates that our town set a ten percent target for housing that is affordable. And Diane provided us some figures that we're at five point seven nine percent on our affordable housing target. So if we approve the development of one hundred and twenty seven units without providing for physical units contained within the structure, that five point seven nine percent figure is going to immediately drop. So it's important, not just because our number of affordable units will go down, but it's important because I think a lot of us have heard from people in the community who are having a hard time finding places to live here. And I can give one quick example, some qualitative evidence for everybody here that I have a we had a friend who was living in a single family home here in Bristol. And because of the housing boom, the landlord who was renting it to them wanted to sell it because they were getting a high price for it. But one of the prospects that they faced was not being able to find anything affordable enough to live here in Bristol. So I think we need to think about that. We need to think about the fact that we actually have people here who have put their roots down in our community. They have friends here. They've gone to the schools here. They have daycare providers here. They have families here. And so one of the things that I want to ensure that we do is that we do honor the spirit of our inclusionary zoning ordinance. And that will allow us to continue making that progress toward the ten percent goal. And my preference would be that my ultimate preference would be that we would, we would be in full compliance on the inclusionary zoning ordinance and that we would have twenty percent units in this spot. However, I know that, you know, out of reasonableness, I don't think that that's going to be possible knowing what we know about some of the legal obstacles and some of the decisions that have been made in the past about that. And so one of the things I I would favor would be more the hybrid approach that was somewhat adopted by the planning board where a a certain percentage of units are physically located in the building and off site and some payment in lieu will be available. That I would support something like that. So to get to a yes on on this, I I would ask for no fewer than ten percent physical units on and off site. Okay? I I would also ask that the provisions of our inclusionary zoning ordinance relating to design and building requirements apply to the units that are located within in the development. Okay? And and what our inclusionary zoning ordinance says is that all inclusionary units provided within the development should be reasonably dispersed throughout the development. They should be indistinguishable in appearance. They can, they should contain a mix of bedrooms up to and including through bedroom units. They should be compatible with the architectural style. They should be built and occupied prior to or simultaneous with the construction occupancy of any market rate units. The reason why I'm bringing this up, Andy, right now is because if we're under the two thousand and eight Affordable Housing ordinance, then this stuff, I'm not necessarily sure is in that two thousand and eight ordinance that was written when the decision was made in two thousand and eight. The other thing that I would like to be sure about is that there's a part of that ordinance, H four, that the provisions of that ordinance relating to affordability requirements be be met. But lastly, there's a part of that ordinance, our inclusionary zoning ordinance, that says that there is a local preference for people that live here in Bristol to get the affordable housing. So what that says is that they will give priority to these units, to people living and working in Bristol as well as applicants having children, parents or siblings, or residents of the town if shown to be consistent with state and federal fair housing laws. So thi- this is why I think it's important and I'm wrapping up here. But I believe that the affordable housing component will make some people's lives better. I think if you're a single mother or a father, we have the the data from the Diane who has been so wonderful throughout this whole process was able to put together for us. But if you're a single mother or a father of a child and you're making forty thousand dollars per year, which is nineteen dollars and twenty three cents per hour, your rent would be a thousand dollars a month. It would be based on your income. So if we insist on these conditions, I believe that we will be making lives better. But most importantly, we will, we will be keeping our community intact. And again, my my preference would be some sort of, and and I don't know if my colleagues would support this or not, but some sort of hybrid approach with the affordable housing. Yeah.
Follow up on that if you don't mind. So I agree in large part. I'm really unhappy about the affordable housing being in lieu of the money is very, very, very low. It's one of the lowest in the state. I think it is the threshold and we're not going to be able to buy very much for the money in lieu of. So I think that I know that that's a tool that was there and it kind of goes with this property. But it disturbs me and the thing that I think I find sort of the most offensive, and I know it's also a a tool, was that it can be onsite or off site. And I think someone here summed it up when they said, you know, these people who live in the the ghetto, I'm not, I don't think that, I would not use that word necessarily, but I want to see these units in the building. And that's really the the bottom line for me is like units in the building. I'm not looking necessarily for twenty percent or fifteen percent or whatever. I mean, I think, you know, there's, there was supposed to be able to keep talking about five, but I mean, three tonight, but I thought there were five, but there were two others that you were doing on Hope Street. I'm not sure if that's correct or not, but I'm very concerned about that aspect because to me it seems very discriminatory. Like to me, that is, is to have those buildings, like if you are affordable, whatever that means, and I know what it means because I have all the research myself as well as what Diane gave us today. Then you can live over here, but if not, you can live in the big building. That is really, really, really not acceptable in my view. And so and I just wanted to, so I think that, you know, I think anybody, like if somebody wants to not live in a big factory building, which I actually love converted factories, but if somebody doesn't like that, they may want to live in a in 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 a rehab old home. So why wouldn't you make any of the buildings available to anybody by choice? Let them choose where they want to live. So why wouldn't you make any of the buildings available to anybody by choice? Let them choose where they want to live. I just wanted to just also like in the Housing Works Rhode Island. Factbook, this is based on two, uh, 2020 information. And the annual income needed to affordably purchase, no, sorry. Affordable purchase a home in this community is like 90. Where is it? I'm sorry, I should have this highlighted. Is $97,138, but to rent the two-bedroom unit in this apartment in this community. You need to have an income of $54,880. And I say that because. For years, for years, affordable housing has been like, what does it mean? What is it? Who are these people? I've actually had some people who are involved with your project say to me. We don't think we want those people living in the building. And I said, well, who are those people? I mean, those people are mostly everybody we know. You know, they're my, my friends, my relatives, anybody who works in social services. Anybody, or a lot of people, maybe not anybody, um, social services, nonprofit world. First step teachers, second step teachers, you know, new patrol officers, you name it. All these people are under these thresholds. And to say that there is somehow something that they are less than or other than is just not acceptable to me. That is the most disturbing part about this project, uh, for me. Now, I'll be quiet in a moment, but, um, just wanted to also say, while I have the floor, just on the other topics, I do think that there have been some good. Points about the parking, making sure the buffer and making sure that the, the people that are. Uh, abutting the property, that there is nothing built on there. I think that that's already in some of the documentation that I've seen. I think you're going to make sure that's 100% that we don't have it because, you know, we want to make this, we want the project. If it goes to be successful, but also to make sure that. You know, whoever's sitting up here is not every week after week after week, because I, I've been here for a long time on and off and, you know. Having complaints and issues, like, you know, this is disruptive, this is noisy, this is, you know, what a runoff in my spot, whatever it is. It always comes back to the council and I think it's imperative, uh, coming upon us now. To make sure that we make sure that it's 100% done correctly. Um, I also think that, um, you could just answer me one quick question and that is, what is the average size of your units? In, um, like in Warren, for example. Like a, like a one-bedroom, two-bedroom or loft, I mean.
Could you come up to the?
Well, I know, I know, just rough, roughly, like, I mean, is it?
Could you, could you come up to the mic? Thank you. And just give your name again for the record, please.
Chris Reynolds from Brady Sullivan. As we, we went through the tour, you really saw every unit so different, especially with Torristo, such a wide building. So you could have, you know, typically a two-bedroom apartment, it's 1,100 square feet, something like that, 1,000. But when you just have to repurpose the building, some of the units just get bigger because. You just have to repurpose the building instead of having a 20-foot corridor. So, um, so Warren Torristo is a little bigger, but. So where a typical two-bedroom unit would typically be 1,100 square feet. Sometimes they average a little bigger because of the mill setting.
I mean, basically what I'm getting at is they're not small apartments.
They're not small.
They're not small apartments because of that.
And I think we do want to make sure that.
Thank you.
You know, we live up to, um, you know, whatever all of our other ordinances where X number of unrelated people cannot. You know, more than so many cannot live in the, there because obviously being in a college town. Some of those kids have a fair amount of money. Um, I do want to just, I think I missed one of my points and let me just go back. This is what happens when you don't write it all down. Um, or you have it all written down in all this paper. I sort of say about the difference between the 98 units, 105 units and 127 units. I look at it this way. I think that the density is kind of high. But I see, I view that as the density bonus for the affordable units in the building. That's how I view it. So I just wanted to put that out there. Um, and I know that that's going to have to be, go back, there's going to be some further discussion, at least in my end, about that aspect of it. So, um, that's how I look at it. That's how I could accept 127 units. With the, you know. The affordable units in there indistinguishable. It doesn't run with the unit, you know, the affordability, it runs with the person. And I think that's an important distinction. I think that that goes both ways in some places. So that I'll be quiet for the moment. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, and residents, thank you. You guys have been great in regards to. Standing up and expressing your thoughts. I, I, I value all of you and your thoughts. I do have some, uh, questions for the developers in regards to environmental insurances. And I don't know who, who would be answering that, but. You know, I really think we're going to need some environmental insurances that whatever happened in other developments would not happen to our community and our community would be. Protected and, and, and if we move forward with the development, I think it's a very. Key question people kept bringing up and I was just wondering if you could speak to it.
Sure. Um, as there's a lot of challenges to mill redevelopment. We are very regulated for that. We are a non-union company. We get, um, a lot of complaints throughout the process. We are. I would have Department of Health inspections almost daily at times. And so. We meet the standards. We've had some issues with subcontractors without a doubt. Subcontractors have been fined and to there, any subcontractors that get fined, we also get fined because we're responsible as well. And, you know, developing over 3,000 units, we've had. A lot of, of, of development and challenges repurposing these mills. And usually it's dealing with the lead paints, dealing with the hazardous waste, dealing with it. And, and, and meeting everything, but yes, it is one of our biggest challenges. To do it and make sure all our sub, subcontractors also follows those regulations to do it. So, yes, we are.
So if we were to move forward. And what assurances on those environmental violations would, could you? Or give us, I mean, there's got to be processes in place that you have learning from the past.
Yes, completely.
That you guys are, you know, if anything. We want to make sure that this doesn't happen.
Yeah, we would agree. We don't want it to happen either. And I think if anything, we're, our, I don't know, say we're more regulated now, but. We are definitely watched even closer. Because of our, our, our company and, and of all the development we've done. So. The only thing I will say is that it, we are watched from many, if anything, over, now I was over, but you know what I'm trying to say is that. Uh, we, we're not sliding by anything. We are very, very watched and, and regulated to there. So.
Right. And in regards to this.
Sure what else I could give you though.
No, I, I understand where you're going. And then my other question was on regards to the seawall. And that liability and all, you know, dealing with that as well. Is that something you can address?
I mean, we are, we're, we're the developer. We're going to be the owner. We keep the property. We have the management company as well. It's our own maintenance staff. So. Like Torristo, you know, like a, a lot of these mills are built on the river. And to there and, and, and many of our properties. So. We would always maintain our own properties and deal with whatever those issues that exist, not to a third-party management company or anything like that. We manage and maintain everything ourselves. So.
And then in regards to the parking capacity. For the 127 units. Um, and regards to protecting those buffer spaces around neighbors and things like that. Can you, can you address that, that question that came up?
I can address the parking on our site without a doubt because that parking is an important piece to the development. Whether than we tried to maximize the number of spots and that's what we've done through the planning board. And with some of the variances, we have. A, when we assign all leases, we get parking tags, they tie off to a license plate. It's an important thing to not have over the number of, you only have, you know, if it's one bedroom, you get one car. Two versus one inside. So parking is something that we, we take seriously because it is an important issue. With it. So we monitor that. So, um, very closely with the leases that tie to. Apartment that tie to a license plate that tie to a tag system. So obviously I can't control parking offsite. If somebody chooses to park on the street, I can obviously monitor everything inside my building as well as on my lot. But realistically speaking, obviously if somebody parks on a street, I can't enforce that if it's legal to park there.
Sure. Thank you. Diane. I'll finish up.
No, no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, 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 go ahead. No, no problem. Um, I just wanted to say that when cash bidding wars are occurring in Bristol. Uh, not for unique designer homes, but for like everyday fixer-upper, fixer-uppers. I believe we have a significant housing shortage happening. And as a community, we must look at reforming these zoning laws to address the housing deficit that we have. We need housing priced at a financial level where low to middle income earners can achieve. Including young professionals, seniors, teachers, firefighters and others who work in the town. Think that's very important. I'm for this Renaissance project. I think it's going to bring new life. Into this section of town, which requires a much-needed facelift. I think we can all agree. It, it needs some work over there. Finding new purposes requires a vision. And the ability to see beyond the challenges of the zoning restrictions, parking and structural items. I believe repurposing this building makes the environmental safe. Sense than tearing it down. Um, I'm encouraging the developer and the planning board to please use lead. Green building strategies to make sure that the building is a five-star rating. And, and using all those environmental strategies as possible. And, um, honestly. I'm for the commercial space reduction from 22,000 square feet to 6,300. I think it protects that. That little neighborhood. Um, I think too much commercial, uh, businesses like a loud restaurant or a bar, I think it's going to cause a lot of disruption. And, uh, I think it's just going to keep that, uh, peace of mind over there. Fine with a parking dimension change from, uh, nine feet. From 10 feet going to nine feet. And, um, as far as the density bonus, uh, moving to 127 units. But it has to have a 20% affordable housing piece to it. I believe that we need to have a hybrid approach. Um, and that includes eight units onsite at the Robin Rudd building. And, uh, 10%, which we, uh, would, would include a full 10%. So we have 13 units. So three units are offsite, right? So we have a one single-family home, one duplex containing two units and two units on Hope Street. So that's the offsite. We would have onsite eight units. In the Robin Rudd building and 10% in lieu. Payment to allow us to finance other affordable housing. We, we must keep that 20% affordable housing. As a, I think a condition. And so that, that's my piece, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Diane, I have a question, uh, just from my point of clarification. Yeah, whatever for affordable housing is built, whether it's within or outside of, uh, you know, the location. Is that something, because I, I heard Councilman, uh. Like, uh, you know, state that week, can we limit that to Bristol residents or is it open to anyone within the state of Rhode Island? Okay. That, that, that's fine.
What's the word?
Sorry, I have my microphone on. I'll find that section and then maybe the solicitor can. Speak to whether or not it's something that, you know, can be a, a hard requirement or more of a negotiation.
Okay, uh, let me move on and that's fine. Okay. You know, it was mentioned, the Warren, uh, I did have a chance to call a couple of colleagues in Warren. To gather some information as well. And I did have a chance to me, uh, to speak with the manager as well. And one of the things that she stresses, there was that. You know, the company was very responsive. Uh, whenever there were any issues at all, they were very, very responsive. In fact, they went as far as, uh, upgrading the transfer station, uh, for the sewer because you would not handle. The, uh, the American tourist or in addition to the residents of the area. So they actually spent over $5 million in order to do the upgrade there. And as I pointed out, she was very pathetic that there was never an issue if they, if they were called on. They automatically came about and addressed the issues that there were. Talking about sewer, I know here in Bristol, we've done some upgradings at the Korska transfer station, I believe that's there. But I just wanted to be sure that, because I know there has been some letters to the editor that the, there is some costs will be passed on to the town and so forth. But my understanding is that things are pretty much in place and, uh, I'm sure that, uh, you'll be able to work with the, the town as well. Parking. You know, across the street, um, I've toyed around with this idea before and I'll share with all of you tonight. Maybe you've heard it before, not from me most likely, uh, but that consider that a two-level across the street. And, um, I would say that certainly would benefit not just the complex. But it would be a benefit to municipal parking as well, you know, to be shared. So I would say that, and I know the residents will be like, are you crazy? We already deal with one. I know, I, I hear you. Uh, I was in Washington DC, okay, where there was a four-level parking garage. And I was immediately across the street and I did not know there was a parking garage. Until I went down up to the fifth level of the place I was staying at to see there was a parking garage. You would never know it. The entrance and how the traffic entering exit out of there was not noticeable at all. You know, a very, a very, uh, you know, very low impact. The, the, the decrease, the commercial, um, counsel, uh, Sweeney already addressed that. I, I concur with that. That the less commercial you have there, the better it will be, less traffic. Because then people will not be in and out of the area constantly. That's what I have for the time being.
Thank you.
I did find this section in the, um, inclusionary zoning ordinance and it talks about. If you do an, an inclusionary, you know, if you do a project that triggers the inclusionary zoning ordinance, you are supposed to submit to the town. A marketing plan and a residential selection plan for the low to moderate income units. The plan shall meet state and federal fair housing requirements and shall describe how the lower moderate income units will be marketed. And potential, how potential home buyers or tenants will be selected. And then it goes on to the local preference with the priority being given to the, um, resident selection as, um, as Aaron, as Aaron stated. And so that would be, you know, part of an inclusionary zoning.
Super. Thank you.
So a couple of things. First, I wanted to thank the, the public first again for, uh, coming out tonight. How I know it's late is the air conditioning goes off at 10. That's what you heard it happen and. We're not usually here that late. So a lot of efforts and energies from all of you and I wanted to say thank you. Second, I wanted to thank the planning board and Diane and Andy for, um, a lot of efforts and energies that got us to this point. The planning board along with this developer. I, I think the correct word would be negotiated what is in front of this council now and the request in front of us. So. Um, I know there was a lot of efforts and energies put in that. So I say thank you to them. On a side note, it would seem very appropriate to recognize the loss of our planning board chairman, Jerome Scortrito. A man who truly knew what Bristol used to be, was, and what he wanted it to be too. Uh, a gentleman, um, a salt of the earth gentleman. And he will be missed. And I know I speak for all of us. Can I say that? I've heard some comments from my colleagues. I, I, I hear some reoccurring themes on it. I must tell you, you get a kick out of this. I was on the planning board in 2008 when this was approved. I was an alternate member and I sat there and I remember this dialogue and it's. Coming all back to life again, which is really interesting. And I remember the 98 and I remember why, I think. Where that number came from and I agree with what was said before. I don't think it was pulled out of thin air, but I also don't think it had any particular. You know, we can only do this because of X. So I also recall that the amount of retail space. Was much more significant than is what's being proposed now. I for myself think that, um, I'm okay with the density. I also believe that the residents have a fair reason to be concerned that live around. I get it. I get that. When I grew up, I grew up on Cliff Drive, 1976, we moved to the house. Sullivan Lane was behind us. There were pheasants, pheasants and stone walls. Two years later, houses were going and changed. You know, and do I like it better with the pheasants than the house? Oh, I like the neighbors there, but no, I like the pheasants better. I liked it. But that's part of what we are dealing with here. I think, um, I also, I didn't say thank you to the current owner, Russ and his family. He and his family are a big reason why there's a lot of families that are in Bristol and have what they have today. He and his family. He and his family were employers, and we just recognized that the administrator talked about a one hundred new jobs coming in. Hundreds of jobs were there and a huge reason why. And that waterfront, working waterfront, and we talk about it like fishing boats, but that literally was second for my my grandparents worked there. I'm not the only ones who had family that worked there. So I say, you know, on behalf of this council, thank you. We do it for new businesses and and your business has been there a long time. So I'm okay with the with, and I'm aware of what I'm saying. I'm okay with the one twenty-seven. I believe that the count, the uh planning board did their due diligence. I believe that there are some concerns that truly need to be made sure that they're addressed. One of them was brought up a couple of times about the parking lot, having a true buffer there. And I you've covered this already, so I don't need to reiterate it, but that's really important. That parking lot is quiet right now. I know that you can make sure that it's made in a way and lighting and all of that, that that it it stays unobtrusive to the neighborhood. And I think it adds, it doesn't need to just be ambivalent to the neighborhood. It needs to add to it, and I think you can do that. In regards to affordable housing, I I thought, again, I said negotiating. The planning board and this developer, and I'm going to tell you why I just said this developer in a second, negotiated fifteen percent. Ten to fif- ten to twenty percent is the opportunity there. This this developer did not say, I want to, I only mulling out to do fifteen, or I'm only going to do, the rest of the town is twenty percent. This is an anomaly zoning. This is not the, in my opinion, and I have no malice or positive to this particular development. Sorry, guys. I don't think that's unreasonable. You hit right in the middle of what is is expected. In regards to fee in lieu. Do I really, do I want units? Yeah, actually I do. But I haven't, I don't hold any malice to you for wanting to pay forty thousand per. That's state law. And it's available to you. It's our town ordinance says, we, this is not this council, but a council said, this is what we're okay with. You took advantage of it, and I mean that in a positive way, not in a negative. It's available to you, just like you can build to thirty-five feet, and you can be this close to the wood, to the here and there. It's part of what's in front of you. I have no problem with that. But I would also believe that additional units, I think, makes a lot of sense to the town. I mean, physical units. If this council ultimately gets to a place where we are majority fee in lieu of, we have some great, great organizations that have already been brought out that we can use that money. I talked to Diane Williamson earlier today, and I'll remind, she reminded me of something. We can use those funds. If someone wants to create an additional affordable unit, we can use those funds to, whether it's ten thousand, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, or above. And that counts towards our affordable units. So what I just said was, we can use some of that fund, and one person can do it over here, two people can do it over there, and we can hit our goal in a different way. So I don't think, what I originally thought with the forty thousand was bad. It was just so far off from from the market. But I think it's more about a leverage, just like the town is very good at using our funds and matching funds with grants to get more. I think there's an opportunity there. So at the end of the day, if this council, I think what I heard was parking was a concern and affordable housing. Those are the two things. So I would ask for uh someone or what's a proposal here that we can take the next step on on both of those?
I think we should, I mean, I'm not sure how best to to work that out. I mean, we all have very sim- um several of us have very similar thoughts on what we need. I mean, I think there's definitely a con- uh a consensus among some of us that there needs to be units in the building. So I don't think anybody is saying that they weren't open to affordable housing. It's just the mix of that.
I agree.
And um and what that means and how it is. And we heard a lot of different, um, you know, you talk about affordable, and we, you know, where Diane had put in her email and her memo, the seventeen hundred dollars um as a rent, as rent for certain family of three. Um, and that's different than talking about low moderate income. And it's all kind of the same thing. We have to figure out like what, you know, weird the and I don't know how we do this. Is it through Diane? Is it through our legal counsel? Um, you know, representatives from of us to talk to the developers, because what we haven't heard from them is like, are they open to this? I mean, and that's that's really like, for me, that's a critical aspect of me saying yes to the project at that density. Um, so.
Well, earlier when I said this developer, I'll bring that back up, is that whatever decision this council, let's assume we make a decision this evening. Whatever decision this council makes affects this developer, and if this developer chooses not to take those steps, it's on any developer that's after that. So though that that zone change is then in place. So whoever, if not you, and I'm not suggesting it's not you, but it it is from this stand, from this time forward. So I I don't, I personally, I think, and again, respect to all of you, I think it's what we want. And if this developer said, no, we can't do that, I hope you don't. But if they said no, that doesn't mean we still don't want those things.
Right, so I think we have to like either negotiate it or be clear it is what we want. I think it's clear that we want a mix in units in the building. And that anybody should be able to pick where they want to live. Do they want to live in an apartment and a duplex or in the um in the big bill, in the main building? Can I just ask one quick question, though? I forgot to ask earlier. The people that are living offsite, are they still going to have access to your amenities in the building, like, you know, the community room, if you have a, if you had a pool, if you have a, um, you know, you have a gym, that type of thing?
Yes.
They all will.
I guess.
Everybody will. And that, where would that be stated? Like, where would that be written or documented?
It would be, uh, I'm not sure, to be honest. So I mean, they'd be a renter, uh, it'd be a renter of the of the property and would be, you know, would be using the parking lot, would be using our amenity package, so.
I mean, that would, would that be something that we would make sure was written into our um, like, our agreements with the, you know, with our attorney? Or?
Let let's ask the lawyer.
You ask your lawyer, I'll ask.
Okay.
I I think Councilor Prehr, that would be a condition, a preliminary approval, if that's the way we're proceeding.
Yeah.
So just to be so clear, I'm actually not, I'm not on board with requiring that it needs to be in the building. I am what Aaron actually quoted from, um, I loved it, which is talking about, you can't tell the difference between. Uh, so whether that's on in the building or otherwise, doesn't matter to me. Personally, it doesn't matter to me. I I I know that I understood the comment, and I understood why you made the comment about the ghetto area. I got it. So I'm I'm not taking that out of context, but I think there are so many beautiful places downtown and in Bristol. I don't think it matters. I think maybe in another community, but for me, doesn't matter. Wherever those are actually, as long as they are appropriate and similar, and I'm absolutely fond of it.
So that's a disagree, agree to disagree on that, because I think it's discriminate discriminatory not to give people a choice, but you know.
No, you misunderstand. I'm not saying that, well, actually, I am saying that I'm open to it. I'm not saying it's required.
So so what I'm hearing is it sounds like we're, there's a motion, we're making a motion to approve the planning board recommendations with uh conditions of a twenty percent affordable housing uh piece of it. And it sounds like we want a hybrid version, maybe a ten percent in lieu and and ten percent uh mix of offsite and onsite? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I I don't know that, I don't even know if it, I think we can do any of it, but I I'm not sure we all agree. Like, I want to make sure there's there are units in the building, so I would personally, you know, maybe be willing to drop that down to twelve percent or ten percent or, you know, fifteen percent. It's fifteen percent right now, so we're changing that. If it's going to be, you know, we, I think we have to kind of take a breath and and just sit back for like a couple of days even to think about what the math looks like in terms of those units. Like, what is it if 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 it's like twenty percent and then you're going to have fifty percent of that? Yeah, no, I'm gonna say twenty-five percent of that is in fee of luwa, if luwa. I mean, I think we'd have to just, I mean, I haven't sat here and calculated that stuff right now, you know? And uh so.
So.
I don't think we can.
You could, you brought up a great point. It's not unreasonable to say it's quarter of eleven on a Wednesday night. Is there, is the reality that, is there a reality that we can get to a resolution this evening? If there is not, we, where we are at the moment is, we could continue this with council approval. Not that I'm asking to do it, but I mean, is, if we continue it to our August third meeting, that would give, you mentioned, some time to consider different proposals. I'm open to the discussion. I'm open to how we get to that, whether it's fee in lieu of or combination of all of it. So happy to talk about it. So I asked this council, do you believe we can get to a conclusion this evening? If you believe we can, let's continue it to the third.
I think we're really, really close, but I don't think we are at that point right this minute. I mean, I don't know what my colleagues think, but I think there's, you know, because I just, I've heard like all of us saying similar things, but not exactly the same. And so rather than end up with a, you know, a huge debate like down the road at that meeting, let's figure out what's, let's, let's work with our, like, maybe the housing advocates and that, you know, our community development and others and and figure out what's what's real, what's re- reasonable. And also, we have a, we do have a particular developer right now. So, you know, I mean, I don't think anybody wants to see them take off on this project, but the same token, this is stuff that's important to this council. And when people say, well, in two thousand eight, yes, I was here in two thousand eight. Things have changed. Housing issues have changed. And I think that, you know, affordable is, I mean, when you're still talking about an apartment potentially for seventeen hundred instead of two thousand or twenty-one hundred, that's still a lot of money. You still need to have a pretty good income. And I think that there's such, it's such, it's such a wide topic. You really have to give a little bit of thought on 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 structuring that. That's my personal view.
So I I also think, I gotta say this too, affordable housing is extremely important, but also the development is extremely important to move forward, in my opinion. That building, although, Russ, you put effort and energy into it, it's time. And it's been talked about, and it's not the town's building. It's a private person's building. Until it moves, and it's never going to be the town building, but we need to move forward with this. We need to, this is, stay with me on this, affordable housing for everyone. What do I mean by that? It controls taxes. It's going to help. We're going to get more revenues from this. I didn't say affordable housing isn't important. It is, and we're going to go through that. But I don't want to lose sight and say that's the only thing we're talking about. This is, I've had so many people come up to me and say, I want to sell my house, but I have no place to go, and I want to stay in Bristol. I mean, not five or ten, more than that, twenty people maybe, and said, I want to sell my house, which is going to open up all of that. And I know we get in the quagmire. We're all very concerned about this. We should be. This is important. We're all on the same page. It's just a variable of what we're, and personally, I, if we leave it with enough flexibility that we get what we want, but the developer, this developer hopefully can move forward with what they want, I think it, I think it's possible. Can we do that tonight?
No.
Is there a proposal tonight? Because we can vote on something this evening, and if we're, if we can't find a conclusion this evening, we can continue.
But could I, I I don't think there can be. Can I just say one thing? That's kind of just like a little levity here. I mean, maybe not levy, but I will say that the importance of this project is not less than any of us because we just had a ribbon cutting down at this very new beautiful dock. And as we were all walking out on the dock, we all looked back and said, wow, that building really needs to be redone.
Oh, we did.
With respect.
Mary, I think I was with you.
Yes, you were.
So if there's a motion that this council wants to consider, please make it.
Uh, may, I'll I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the planning board uh recommendations with the conditions of keeping a twenty percent affordable housing um in there as a condition. And uh we direct, uh, we draft a finding of facts uh on the affordable housing. Andy?
So wait, Andy, Andy, before you, I could just give clarity in regards to that twenty. So it's in your motion, are you suggesting X is uh physical units? You know what I mean?
Yep, um, um, proposing that twenty, we hold to the twenty percent housing um percentage, and we would have uh ten percent in lieu uh to finance other affordable housing areas. Uh, this hybrid approach would give us ten percent um offsite and onsite units. So we'd be engaging the units that are already offsite, using those, but they would have to come in with some onsite. So it's a, I feel like it's a hybrid balance uh in affordable housing, and it's targeting all different areas.
Okay, so if I can just confirm my of of understanding, so you're you're talking about a hundred and twenty-seven units, no change on the number?
Planning board recommendations. It seems like we were.
Okay, um, twenty percent affordable, twenty percent of those units have to be affordable, of which half of that, ten percent could be fee in lieu, and that would be acceptable at the forty thousand dollar per unit state fee in lieu.
Right.
Um, and then of the other ten percent, um, the three that are offsite currently.
Correct. So ten percent is thirteen units, so you have, you have the three units offsite. So you have a a one single family home, um, and one duplex containing two units. Um, and then you have two units on Hope Street, so I'm coming off with five off.
The two units at Hope Street have not been part of this.
Okay.
Proposal.
Okay.
So.
So we'll remove that.
So the ten units are, all ten units onsite, or is that also a mixture of on and offsite to be decided by the planning board at preliminary, or that's?
I think it should be onsite.
Onsite.
Like the three that you have off, and then
Three off.
Onsite in the mill building, just to be clear what we're talking about, my onsite. Okay.
So is there anything else? I think you covered it. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and so.
Oh. I thought you did a nice job, Andy.
He did, but I just want to clarify that that your vote is not so much to approve it there, but you're directing staff, myself, and the director of community development to prepare findings and facts and a decision for you.
That is absolutely correct.
Just for a point of clarity, is that, are those findings of fact necessary for that increase? Because we're in the realm of the, what the zone allows. Is it necessary to do? I'm not suggesting we shouldn't. I'm just asking, do we have to? If that's part of his motion, it's fine.
Um. I I I think, I think it is because the planning board recommendation was at the fifteen percent.
Okay, great.
So, I mean, I I don't think it's, because it's not a big change, I don't think it's a big findings of fact things, but I do think you have to have it because it is different.
Okay, so there was, was there a second? A second? Okay, discussion.
So that, so that clarifies things. We're not saying, we 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 still have to take another vote, Andy, am I correct? You have to do the finding of that, and then we're going to look at all those conditions, which would be in all that and that, and that, then we'll take another vote at another meeting.
Yeah, the, well, my understanding is, if this was in accord with the planning board recommendation, um, except for this element, so that all the other stuff that we haven't talked about, the commercial space reduction, the parking space size, the start, all that stuff is that you're in support of. Um, and it's just that you're requi- and you can adopt the planning board's findings for that. Um, but where you're differing with the planning board, you need your own findings. So we would have a written decision that would include that, would include adopting the planning board's findings on the other elements. And then for this particular thing, having your own findings. That would be presented to you. You'd have it before the meeting. You'd have the, that meeting. It's not a public hearing, but you five get to discuss and debate it, and you can ask questions and you can change it. You can say, oh, this is terrible. Come back next, next meeting with something totally different.
Okay.
Where you can say, well, we need to change this word to this word and this word here, and we're okay with it. Um, and whenever you are okay with it, you would vote on that. And if if it passes, that would be it.
At our next meeting.
Ho- hopefully.
No.
I mean, we would have it for you, but hopefully you would then, you would be, you would find it acceptable. And I just want to ask one other thing, because um, because I can see actually Mr. Lay is nodding his head anyway.
Yeah.
He had talked about wanting to include the stuff that is in twenty-eight dash three seventy-three. Um, sorry, sub C, not three. So it's section twenty-eight dash three seventy subsection C of the zoning ordinance, which are the requirements for the onsite, which that they be integrated into the units and can't tell them apart and so forth. Um, and then he didn't say anything about it, but um, I I I guess offsite, if you were including that twenty-eight three seventy F is the requirement for the offsite units. Um, and I I guess I'm asking, is that something that you would want included in this as well? Um, or just keep it to the numbers and leave those details for the planning board review at preliminary?
So let me just read that part off right here, if if that's all right. Um, so the planning board added sole discretion may allow any developer of an inclusionary project to comply with the requirements of this through one of the following offsite exactions. Offsite rehabilitation of affordable units and um existing buildings. Offsite new construction of affordable units and donation of Offsite new construction of affordable units and donation of one or more parcels of land suitable for residential development to be held. By the Affordable Trust Fund.
So, so I guess, I guess the, the answer is you're reading, we probably don't need that. We just specify that the three, we'd identify those three particular units. By address on Thane Street for the onsite.
Okay.
But what about the onsite? What about section C with the be reasonably dispersed, be indistinguishable? Contain emit.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, I'd like to include that in my original motion.
Anything else for clarity in?
Not, not yet.
Anything else from the council? All right, so could we, so I think it's clear, but I think it's worth restating. So we have 20% total, 10% is in lieu. The other 10% is the three units that have already been discussed off, it's not really offsite, but I guess part of project. Not in the large building, and then the remaining portion inside the building, correct? On, and indistinguishable from any other units. Is there anything else?
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion from the council? One moment. And, and Andy, if this council at our next meeting decides after thoughts, wants something else. Less, more different, whatever, then how can we make those decisions at that next meeting or would it require an additional one? I don't know how substantive a change would be. So for example, we said 18%. I'm not saying we're going there, but just if we want a, a lesser percentage.
Maybe.
We pay him a lot of money.
I mean, I mean, we're, we're going to be drafting the findings of fact, so I, I, I think the findings of fact. From what I'm hearing, the findings of fact are fairly specific on, the reason is the 20% is because that's what you've got with the 20%. And that's the determination of what needs to be keeping Bristol moving forward with affordable housing and not.
Exactly.
Falling behind or staying even. So, so I guess if you would say a different number from 20%.
I use it as an example.
Okay, so, you know, if you are moving the mixture around, probably yes, you could certainly tinker with the mixture at the next meeting. And we can change those by hand and you could vote on it at that meeting.
Anything else from the council?
Just point to clarification. So how many in the, in the uni, in the building itself, we propose, how many?
10%. 10 units.
10 units.
10 units in the building, three units on the east side of Hope Street, one in the dup- two in the duplex and one single family. As identified, and then 13 units worth, which would be 10% as fee in lieu.
Everybody okay?
Yep.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
We're not done, but you can be. Yeah, we have more to go. Aaron says, yes. We're still in the meeting. Thank you. Madam clerk, do you need a sec? Oh, I know. Are we in executive?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Solicitor.
So, request a, a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Rhode Island general laws. 42-46-5A2, potential litigation regarding Canes Way condominium association. 751 Medicom Avenue and remain in executive session pursuant to Rhode Island general law. With regard to acquisition or lease of real property. Where the public disclosure of that information would be, could be harmful to the town's interest.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll be back after executive session.